All right. Call a meeting to order, please.
Yeah, of course.
In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just like to exercise a point of personal privilege with the acquiescence of my colleagues here and announce that, make a little announcement in relation to our chairman, Bob Maseri, for some of you may have known, underwent some very serious surgery this morning and it's, we're very happy to report that the surgery went well and as expected. And we're hoping that Bob will be back home at Sandra, Sandra Drive later this week and back meeting with us hopefully in not too distant future. Again, our thoughts and prayers with him and his family and the expectations are looking very favorable, certainly very happy with that. That being said, Mr. Crisco, I understand you might be making a motion to appoint Mr. Yule as the acting clerk?
So moved.
Chair will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Disposed, unanimous. Congratulations on your lofty...
Good, good to win something.
First order of business this evening, we go over some budget hearings. We'll start with the veterans, conservation, Hillview Commission, parks and recreation, finance, accounting, and then administration. So if you want to start it off, Mrs. Mag.
Good afternoon, or evening, I should say. How's everybody doing?
Fine.
Good, thank you.
Okay, bear with me because I, this is my first official slideshow presentation, so...
This isn't your first rodeo.
Huh?
You've been through this before.
But, no, but I've never put one of these together before.
Oh, all right.
It's my first time.
I hope there's a lot of pictures, a lot of illustrations.
I do have a lot of pictures, but what I try to do is actually do, try to get to the budget first and then, you know, whatever afterwards. You know, the, well, okay, the, well, the mission statement, I don't think we need to go through that, but I'm going to go right through the line item detailing for you, if that's all right. So I had to, I have an increase on 500 on other supplies. The reason being I'm doing that is because I have a program that I'm, I want to institute effective 2018, it's called Graduates to Defenders, and it's actually recognizing our local high school students enlisting to defend our country. The first coin of hopefully many given to the graduating seniors during free ceremony and in front of their family and friends. So what I'm hoping, what my anticipation is, is we would have a challenge coin representing every branch of the service and we will incorporate North Reading into this coin. So they'll know their very first coin came from North Reading. As they graduate, it's also a great way for me to keep track of all our guys and girls that are heading into the military. I just actually received some information on the cost of the coins and like anything else, you buy it in bulk, the more you buy in bulk, the less it is. There is a, there's two places I'm looking at right now. One of them that's already working with Chicopee with this. Chicopee's the only one, the only other town that's doing this, actually. And I just thought it was a great, a great thing to add on, to give to the graduates in a special ceremony. I kind of touched base with Mr. Bernard on it and she does hers at the gradu- at graduation ceremony time, but he was thinking more maybe we do it on award night. But that's in the, in the future to discuss a little further, but this is, this is what I was hoping to be able to accomplish for the graduating seniors of North Reading. We'll go back. Okay, on the office supplies, there was an increase for $200 due to the load increase in additional programs that I'm adding. A lot of paper going through, a lot, through a lot of paper needs. Subscriptions being an increase of 100 for additional ads to acknowledge events and things of that nature going, going forward for future events for the Army or veterans. What I did was decrease on my, on 5710 travel, what I did is I decreased eight, that by 800, which made up for that 500, that 200, and the 100 going into other supplies, so I, to level service that area. The other thing was transportation, an increase of $10,000. We did a decreased, the veterans' benefits by 10,000 in adding an additional line item for transportation to be able to have either pay somebody to be able to drive veterans as they need in town back to their appointments. But there's also another, that I recently was at one of my meetings, there's a new objective that's out there for, it's kind of like Uber, but it's, it's called Q-Ride. And so what they do is they bring in all different drivers, you know, different businesses that are interested in getting involved in this Q-Ride. And it's kind of like the central location, if you will. And so I would actually call Q-Ride and I would say, hey, I had a veteran that needs a ride to Jamaica Plain. And what they would do is, it's almost like a bidding that goes on and then I can choose the lowest bidder on it. They're all Cory-checked and they all background-checked, all the drivers. So it would kind of alleviate the, any liability on our end as far as the town goes because we would actually be paying somebody on the outside to do this. Just so you understand, veterans that are with the VA, they're allowed, you know, they can get transportation from one VA area to another. But if they choose, and I have a few of them that choose because they've had their regular primary care physicians, say at the Leahy Clinic, they can't go to the Leahy Clinic via a van through the VA unless the VA has approved it. So it has to be an approval from the VA in order for them to get that transportation, otherwise they're on their own. So I have three in town that are actually wheelchair-bound, they're not under Chapter 115, so it's out-of-pocket expenses, so this was another way to assist them since we don't have things like the ride or any other, other types of transportation to get them back and forth. It'll also help alleviate the needs on my end, on my end, because I'm doing a lot of driving back and forth to the VA to, with the veterans.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, thank you. Um, there's a couple of things. Do they get reimbursed for the expense on the, on the Q, called the Q-Ride?
Would they get reimb, would the individual get reimbursed?
Yeah. Well, that's pay anything out of their pockets coming out of, out of your budget.
This would come out of here.
Okay.
Right. So these are people that, they, you know, they, like, had somebody get a wheelchair van, for instance, to the Mass General, it was $500 round trip. It was how much? $500 round trip. And it's $89 through Uber from, from here to the VA in Bedford, just so you know. Now, with Chapter 115, if they, in need of those doctor's appointments, just so you know, Chapter 115, the state will reimburse us back the 75% of that.
Of the 500?
If it, if it's a veteran under Chapter 115, yes.
Yes. Obviously, if not, then...
Correct, correct. So this, this would actually help everybody in town, you know, all the veterans in town. So if we have some that are not on Chapter 115, I've, I've gotten calls, hey, you know, I need a ride to Mass General, or my husband does, he's in a wheelchair, I can't get him there. This would kind of help alleviate some of that.
So fortunately, we're not, some of these would not be reimbursable. And for those that have, like, as you, example, you pointed out as far as the primary being in Leahy, not covered through the veterans, we can provide transportation for them, but that wouldn't be subject to the 75% reimbursement.
Correct, correct. It's just another alternative, we're trying to find another alternative that would kind of ease up my end of it because I am taking a lot of them, you know, not so much the wheelchair-bound ones, but even regular appointments, I'm taking people back and forth up there and it's...
Mr. Chair?
I want to make sure I understand, you're decreasing your trans, your benefits to the veterans and then you're going to move it over to transportation, is that what I understood?
Correct, correct. And, and, yes. And what we'll do is we'll actually treat that line item the same as we do with the veterans' benefits. That line item is specifically to transportation only. It doesn't go into anything, it can't be taken out for anything, anything else, just as we do with the, the regular veterans' benefits with...
So what happens to the benefits, I guess?
Right now, I'm, I'm, right now, I'm okay on the benefits end. So I, I was able to go through the financials on the, on the benefit, on the benefits for the veterans and I'm doing okay. So right now, I have, without considering scripts or any outstanding things that I'm unaware of, right now, I think I'm looking at about 76,000 right now to the end of the, for the end of the year, fiscal year. Got to be outstanding.
I think I need to sit down with you between now and when you approve the, I'd like to talk about that. I don't like seeing red in the veterans'.
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, okay, so you didn't want to see red in the decrease a minute, okay, gotcha.
Ms. Brogdon? Liz?
I know, I know that, but... So just speaking with the decrease of the $10,000 and adding it to the transportation line item, Sue is running a surplus in veterans' benefits this year, so, as well as last year, she turned back about $80,000 in veterans' benefits. So we're not cutting veterans' benefits, we're not cutting services or anything like that. It has to do with the caseload, the current caseload that she has. And I believe we've talked to the Finance Committee about this and they feel comfortable. I mean, we're not in the situation where we were probably four or five years ago where we were running very low on veterans' benefits and we had to go to the Finance Committee for a reserve fund transfer.
Right, right.
We have made sure that the veterans' benefit budget is, is fully funded. So we're not cutting services by any means. You know, she feels comfortable with this, with even adding additional caseload, we would still be okay with this budget amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this particular area, transportation? Mr. Crisco?
Yes. I called you on this, I, you may not recall this, but last year, for years, I've been in town now for 13 years, and every year, I get called from AM Vets, Marine Corps, North Reading Vets, the Vets, 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 and we donate to all of them.
Right.
So when you started talking to me about this transportation issue, I started calling all these people that I've donated money to and probably all of you guys have donated money to. When they call you, they tell you, this is for the North Reading veterans. And so I called all these places to say, hey, we have a transportation problem. I said, can you tell me how many of the, our North Reading residents you've transported over the last five years? Zero. So I only bring it out as a public announcement at this point because my family and I donate a lot of money to these organizations for the North Reading resident veterans and we're not getting any of that money. But the AM Vets is still out there and I'm not sure if you've reached out to them.
The AM Vets?
Yeah, AM Vets.
Yes. Well, the thing is, see, again, all that is typically run under what we would consider volunteer. So, you know, you get people that come in last minute, I need an appointment, whatnot, or even if they give me a week or whatever, I get, I can call somebody, yeah, I can do it, and then all of a sudden, it's, now I can't, you know, a little Johnny, you know, who's got a school play or whatever, or, you know, I have an opportunity to go play golf. When they're getting paid, they're going to be there for the job.
No, I understand.
You know, you know what I mean? So it was just, it's not that we wouldn't use, I'm not going to consider still using those areas first, but it's an alternative to have at least that cushion there that if I'm in that situation, I can use it, call these people and say, hey, I need to get this person out. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, the automatic spot that I'd go through. You know what I mean? It's just a cushion there and I would absolutely contact the VA in Bedford, you know, see if they have any there, anybody available, anybody local that's available. Those are the first places I'd be calling, then I would go to use this as a...
You have your own fund. You have your own fund that people can donate money to.
Yes, yes. And actually, I've had people do that, I've already had people doing that already, so...
Thank you, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, Abby?
I have two questions.
You need the microphone.
One is, could you, so the coins are going to be given to a high school graduate at some point in the spring of the senior year, assuming that he is enlisting?
Not assuming.
For every kid?
No. Those are, those are, they will be going into the military, they're going to be signing on the dotted line with their recruiter, they're going to need to show me their paperwork in order to receive a coin.
All right, so then, how many coins do you get for $500?
I'm working on that. Like I said, I just got all this information just brought back to me from Chicopee. So I know she pays, well, first of all, you're going to want five coins, you're going to want every branch because you're going to have to have them made up and ready to go. So she ended up doing 100 coins of each, but Chicopee's got a lot of...
Of each service.
A lot of people, you know, a lot of military over there. So, so each branch, she got 500 coins is what she did. So her, after all the expenditures of that and ordering and designing up some recognition, the recognition, getting the, getting the folders for them and all that kind of stuff, it was a little over 2,000 for that. But I also, I'm also working with my guy down in North Carolina that's done all my stuff, so I'm waiting to hear back from them, too.
And the transportation, we're not required to provide transportation to private doctors for an hour. I'm not suggesting you don't, I'm just asking if we're required to.
We're not mandated to do it, but like every town that goes through this situation that doesn't have anybody? The Veterans Service Officers are usually taking them to where they're going to go. They can't find, if they cannot find somebody, take them.
Just double-checking.
I have quite a few that, that have no families at all, nobody. And, you know, I'm not going to leave somebody and have the, have that liability on me if somebody dying on me.
I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't be doing it.
Right.
I'm just trying to figure out what's mandated and what's not.
How does the job...
It's a moral mandate that this is funded.
Thank you. That's probably the best way to put it.
Mr. Court, option of points, are they dated or can they be kept for year to year?
They'll be year to year. There'll be no date on them.
Okay.
I wa, I want them generic so that, that way they're used every year. Because I could have 20 one year and I could have 50 the following year. Yeah.
So nobody else in Massachusetts besides the city of Chicopee is doing this?
Mm-hmm.
So we're cutting edge.
Things straight.
So...
We're start, we're starting to get. It's always good to start good things. Time for, they need to get recognized, they get recognized with scholarships to go to college, why not get recognized and go in the military? Simple point.
Well, the coining, coining is a tradition.
It is.
They've been in the military for hundreds of years, right? Okay. You can vote against it, it's okay. Your moral right.
I just have a question, it's more to Liz, I guess, as far as, if we were to provide transportation specifically, other than loaning out a department, had to give someone a ride here, you know, out of the goodness of our heart, which I'm concerned about, I don't think we should necessarily be doing that, could we not just include this appropriation within the veterans' benefits and have transportation as part of that rather than culling it out?
No, you can't because the reason being is because it would, it would actually be, it's, that line item would actually work for more of the ones that are not on Chapter 115, is what it'd be. So it's a, it's a veteran benefit that's not state reimbursed. Does that make sense?
No, I, you know, it makes sense to me, but whether it's reimbursed or not, it's still a benefit that we're providing. And maybe from accounting purposes, it might be easier for you, I'm just concerned about pigeonholing appropriation unnecessarily and not allowing us a flexibility of if there's a greater need than $10,000, we wouldn't have to go for an appropriation, an additional appropriation or a transfer or to town meeting to transfer into this specific line item. If we can leave it in the benefits, you know, and from an administrative standpoint, informing the board, the Finance Committee, that we're appropriating approximately $10,000 within this, for this particular benefit, will never necessarily run short at this particular juncture.
The only...
We wouldn't, we wouldn't run short overall, the way that the budget is voted, it's voted bottom, her expense budget is voted bottom, bottom line.
It still is bottom line, okay.
Yes, so it doesn't make a difference. But Sue only spends veterans' benefits, that line item, on veterans' benefits. She doesn't, you know, if she...
Reimbursable type, reimbursable veterans.
Exactly, correct.
She doesn't, you know, if she needs $500 more for office supplies, she doesn't eat into that veterans' benefit line, she does strictly just use it for that. But if we ran into a situation where she only used $5,000 of her transportation line item and she needed $4,500 to bring her to the rest of the year for, to pay out veterans' benefits, she could use that $4,500 for veterans' benefits.
I'm more concerned about it conversely, whereas if we exhaust the transportation appropriation and need $2,500 more, do we have that same flexibility?
Technically, yes, we do. We do. But she does not use her budget that way.
I know. But would we be able to, would you be able to use that budget that way?
Absolutely.
Without having a transfer.
Without having the transfer and...
Exactly.
Okay. I mean, that's all I want to make sure.
She could, she could use...
Because I can see this becoming something that's very useful and more people would take advantage of it, justifiably so, and I'm okay with that. It's just I don't want to see us limiting ourselves from an appropriation standpoint, from just a bookkeeping nuance to...
No, we, we can do a line item transfer without town, town meeting approval, the way that the motion is read at town meeting.
Okay, I'm good.
And honestly, I feel better with being separated as an accounting because it's not going to be touched by, it's never going to be reimbursable from the state because I would have to go to the other line item to get a reimbursement if somebody was on Chapter 115.
Oh, but I know you're running it...
And I prefer to keep it separate because otherwise I'll...
I know, you're just running at a surplus now and if this takes off and it takes hold, that's a wonderful thing. I just don't want to see it limiting people, you know, come April.
Right.
Just because of a silly bookkeeping situation. So if we could be assured that that could be taken care of, that's good. Any other questions in relation to, good, this is Manu Pelley.
You probably already started, started out with this, but I missed it and I'm sorry. How many veterans do you serve right now?
Well, on Chapter 115, I have 35. I have, right now, oh God, I've got probably 45, if not more, caseloads of aid and attendance, court cases, I just did another five this past week for intent files. That's where I'm trying to do, that's what we do a lot. The Chapter 115 is just financially based. I put four already in from, that were homeless, I'm working on another one, put it, got it, got them into apartments and stuff, so they're off the streets. I'm working on one right now that's in the, on a suicide, on a suicidal end of it, but in general, I can't even put, I can't even put a penny in my file folders, right, file drawers right now, that's how packed I am.
I was just curious how many active, and I'm sure it always, it's fluid, but...
It, and, and, you know what, it's a, it's a hard number to give you because, like, the intent files, I've been keeping them running because that's something new that they started. So the intent file, what it is, is actually saying, I plan on filing for a disability or aid and attendance or whatever it is. I'm planning on filing it, so we send that into the system and then we, what happens is it gives them a year to get all their documents together and for me to get their caseload together and before, it saves the date for them, so they're retro from the, from the federal line.
So it sounds like you had 35 in one category, another 45 plus and another, so you're 80, between 80 and 100 veterans at this particular point?
Yeah, yeah. And that's not counting the ones that you get off-the-wall calls, like, you know, the nursing homes, and I'm working on ones over there, I've got two over there right now and...
Mr. Yule?
Yes, thank you. How long have you been doing this for with the town?
For the town? Seven years.
Seven years. When you took over, has the caseload increased since you took over?
Dramatically?
Like...
It was six. I've, over the years, I've probably handled about 100 cases for Chapter 115, but managed to get them off because I got them jobs.
Right.
Or got them, you know, or they moved, or, you know, lost some, you know, somebody passed away, but I keep all, you know, all the running backlog of everything there. That was just Chapter 115.
But there have been a lot of veterans in the background that never really came forward until you began to take over and to, to let them know, reach out. We did a lot of reach out, haven't we?
Well, that's the reason why, you get to do, the outreach is important, that's what they, they want us to do. And it's not so much outreach-ing, I know, a lot of towns and cities get a little nervous with outreach in some ways because they're in fear of how much the budget's going to explode.
Right, right.
But at some point, it levels, it levels, but it's more than that. There's so much out there as far as the compensations, the, being there for the ones that are, you know, dealing with the opioids, you know, the addictions, and we've got a lot of that going on. The, you know, the suicide watches, I, my son just lost two within the month. And that's just in my family alone, so, and then the A and A cases. So you get people that are assisted living, that can use assistance, so they qualify for the aid and attendance, which is a pension that helps them out to get additional services in their home. And it's that, just what we try to do, we try to keep the, we try to keep them as much as we can in their home so they're able to, you know, live out their, their lives there. I mean, I just, I have another couple that's going through the same thing. She's got dementia, she's dealing with dementia and he's dealing with paralysis and that and they've got, neither one of them can drive.
I think, I think what I, what I wanted to get to is, right now, and this is a budget, we're talking dollars and cents, we're talking numbers, which sometimes, to some people, doesn't equate to people. But I think with what you have done for the past seven years is really commendable and should be acknowledged for the efforts that, that you have put forth in identifying veterans that need services, bringing them out of the shadows, driving them to where, to appointments that they've had to do and, you know, all at the goodness of your heart, and that's not dollars and cents. So I, you know, if anybody's watching here, I want them to understand that the, the work that you've done has been significant, impactful, immeasurable, so, you know.
Appreciate that.
Just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on veterans? No?
Thank you for your continued...
Okay, so the last, the last line item that I'm looking at and increased, this just came to us while we were at the October conference, there's only a couple of towns right now working with it. It's called Vetrespec, it's a, an annual license of 450, but what Vetrespec does, okay, so it's a, it's, it's a web-based program and this works on the federal line. So we have the state end right now, the web business, but this is Vetrespec, which is a web-based, excuse me, web-based veterans' management solution. What this does, it allows me, I'll give you a perfect example. I go to somebody's home, I was just, the other day, I was at somebody's home, the two of them couldn't, couldn't drive, so I had to go over there, get all their information, I have to come back here, type it all up, go back to them, get signatures, and come back and put it through the system. Okay? So it's quite a few steps. With the web, with the Vetrespec, I can physically take this with me, my laptop, and I can go over there, do all the documents, have them sign it electronically and upload it, come back to the office. Boom, done, one shot. So it works with claims management, it's, they have data tracking, recovery tracking, it's all encrypted emailing, it allows me to go in, so, and on the other end, when I, when you file a compensation claim and I've got somebody coming in, hey, you know what's going on with my claim, I can't find out anything, so I have to contact either Rhode Island, wherever the case is at, or I got to contact Boston, where the case is at, and I'll say, hey, can you give me an idea of what's going on with this case, blah, 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 dah, 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 dah. Anything that I put in the system, I'm gonna have the ability to see everything in the system. So, I can tell that person on the spot, this is where the status is, this is what they're doing, this is what they're working on on the claim. So, it, it has everything spell checked, it's, it's all electronic signatures, it's all technical support. I got a chance to actually look at it, it's awes, it's so awesome to watch what, I mean, the capabilities this thing has. The license has an annual fee, right now currently at $399 for the year, um, because we're just getting introduced to it, uh, through the Department of Veterans Services, and there's a few of us that were really interested in it, me being one of them. They have opted to purchase twenty licenses, and from what I understand, they're going up, they were looking, last I heard, was they were doing, last email was like thirty-four licenses for anybody that was interested in it, so we're number one on the list. So, what's happening is they're gonna pay for the first year for us. So, it'll run April to April, and that's why it's on for the FY18 budget. Um, come FY18, it's going up to the 450. Um, but it's given us, given me a full year of no cost to us to be able to really see how this thing pans out and works out. And then the signature pad, which I kind of briefed with IT as well as Liz on it, um, the only thing I'm checking, I need to check with them, if, if a universal signature pad can be used or do I have to use that particular one, which that one is a thousand dollars, the one-time cost on that. But, uh, like I said, at this, when I was doing this slide, and I just got it, I apologize, I didn't upgrade it, uh, they were telling me twenty licenses, but, um, we're number one on the list to get a license for it. And so, that's why the 450 for that, for that annually.
Abby?
Do you, do you, do you not have a thousand dollars for your veterinary budget this time, is that correct?
Is it, excuse me?
You don't have a thousand dollars in the budget to get the signature pad?
No, um, we had kind of discussed that, um, because IT was noting that they probably could do it within the, what the she has budget as, as it is. So, and I wanted to do a double check with them, because if I can get something less expensive, I'd rather do that, and I'm sure you would. But I don't know if it's mandated, if that particular, I, I would imagine most of them are probably universal at, at this point, you know, because I, I'm even thinking if I can, if my web business has the ability to do that, then I can go, when I'm doing Chapter 115, I can do the same thing, go to somebody's home and have the same thing being done there, all electronically.
Thank you. Any, any other questions on veterans? All right, Susan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Conservation.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see anybody in the audience here. On behalf of the Conservation Commission, I would note for the board that there was one change, and it's tied to an employee's movement on the staff schedule and recently settled collective bargaining, as I understand it, for the staff in Conservation Commission. That's the only change.
That's the only change. Very good. Hillview, Mr. Hemmy. Have a seat right next to Liz. Mr. Hemmy, Treasurer of the Hillview Commission. Here you go, sir.
Good evening. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present our, uh, 2018 budget. Uh, as you can see from our budget, it is, uh, an overall increase of two and a half percent that is divided up into really two different pieces. Uh, one is a contractual increase in the management fees of the golf course, uh, so those costs are going up, being offset by the reduction in debt service as some of the bonds are, are finally rolling off. So, overall, we're looking at about a two and a half percent increase in our budget for next year.
As far as additional revenues anticipated, we're increasing...
We are, uh, increasing, we did increase the rates, uh, if we ever get out to play golf again. We did increase the rates for the, uh, both the greens fees and the car fees, a dollar. So, it will be some net revenue. However, given the weather, and given, actually, the weather we had in the fall, we're kind of running a little behind. But we continue to manage our expenses to make sure that, uh, we're matching out the revenue.
And then, uh, I'll just jump in a little bit, just as, as far as in anticipation of a, a need to further negotiate the contract with the, uh, people who are subletting the function facility, uh, since there was a lost year of revenue for the pub?
Yep, so we've entered into discussions with the tenant, um, and we've agreed to defer the payment of rent from April 1st to June 1st. So, it doesn't, it doesn't affect the 2018 budget, it will affect this year's budget. But we're comfortable in making up that spending.
As far as weather forecast and drought, how we doing?
Uh, we're, we're in a little bit of trouble. Now, I will tell you that the, um, the facility is open, the pub, so I don't know if anybody has driven by, but I assume, given the outcry when it closed, that the town will be, and the town's people will be supporting it immensely going forward.
Breakfast?
Uh, no breakfast, yet.
Yeah, okay.
But, uh, he is running a bunch of specials, uh, I think there's a trivia night on Tuesday, so he's doing a lot of advertising and, uh, spent a tremendous amount of his own money in renovating the facility and making it, uh, look pretty good.
There are, there's significant improvements down in the pub area as far as, uh, the decor, uh, the kitchen. The kitchen that finally got completed.
The famous kitchen?
The famous kitchen. And, um, again, we wish, uh, Mr. Yehber, much success because we get to share in that success. So, uh, Mr. Yul?
Just a quick question, and first of all, the place looks fantastic.
Yeah.
I mean, it's night and day now, uh, with the way, has looked and the way it looks now, so, uh, it's really good. I just want to make sure that I understand that the deferment of the rental payment from April to June, so are you saying that April, May, and June, there will be no, oh, April and May?
April and May.
April and May, okay. So, there'll be, uh, no payment of rent by the, uh, um...
Tenant.
Tenant, okay. And, and, and the, and the reason for that?
The reasoning is that it's, unfortunately, the construction and, the construction of the, of the kitchen took a significant amount of time, longer than expected. So, we had expected to open up actually last year, but was unable to do that. So, he lost the full golf season. So, we felt it was fair for him to at least give him a couple of months of rent free to enable him to get the people in and to start generating some business.
He's been very cooperative, right?
He's been very cooperative. The, the $4,000 it's costing us, he's more than put in himself.
And, and regarding the debt services, um, when does the football field come off that? It was not a ten...
Ten, ten year.
It was a ten-year thing, right? So, what year are we in now? Do we know, about like, six? Only third, fourth year? Seems like a long time ago. I'm sorry? Right, so, so we should have, this is...
Another five years or so.
Four, five years?
A little less, you think?
It's less. Yeah, if it's nine, I gotta use my fingers, you know?
I mean, there was some temporary financing for a while, and then it wasn't permanently bonded.
We had a ban, right, I believe, right. Is that, is that the biggest one?
That's the biggest one.
So, that will be, uh, that'll be nice, when that happens.
Don't start spending yet.
Everything is, it's always about spending, it seems.
There are other people, all sorts of ideas, all sorts of ideas.
Thank you, thank you.
And then the, excuse me, the, the lease on the carts are up this year?
I believe, uh, next year, the lease on the carts are up, and the...
Within this budget?
Within this budget, and also the, uh, GFMI, the, there's, uh, we'll be putting out an RFP for them as well, just the people that are running the golf course. So, their schedule is up in the next twelve, eighteen months.
Okay, Mr. Prisco?
So, in last year's budget, you had a serious capital investment in the water system, irrigation system?
Yep.
And did we end up completing the entire course, or did you end up just doing a partial?
No, we did the entire, the entire eighteen halls.
So, you're good, no more capital investment on that, just gonna be maintenance?
Not from the irrigation system, we do have to do some work on the wells.
On the wells?
Yeah.
What kind of work?
Um, some of the, last year during August, one of the wells actually stopped pumping.
Oh, boy.
Which was a problem. Fortunately, we were able to get it back up and running, so we probably need to, um, redig one of the wells, right in, kind of, in the same footprint where it is today, we think.
So, that $30,000 that you referenced in your budget, is that going towards that?
So, we have that for, uh, a capital equipment, golf course, lawn mowers, particularly power. When you look at the age of the, uh, equipment in the golf course, it's significantly older than we might have. So, we're, we're now starting in a, now that we can see kind of the debt service going down a little bit, we're starting to invest more in some of the equipment in the golf course.
So, where's the money for the wells?
It, it's part of the capital. We have sixty-five in the capital plan, I think it is.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, we have sixty-five.
Yeah, okay, I don't know why.
The increase is thirty thousand over last year. Um, and I also just wanted to back up to the debt service for the turf field. Uh, we borrowed for that in September of 2010. The debt service does not end until 2024, so it's fifteen years.
I thought it was ten, I guess, you know?
Mr. Yul?
Uh, thank you. Uh, speaking of wells, uh, maybe, maybe I should have a better grasp on this. These are your wells, correct?
Correct.
Okay? Is, you know, with us moving over to MWRA, is there any way that we, you can latch on to the wells that we have now for water? I mean, because you're saying you're using your own private wells technically for the water? Right, so is there a way to, I, I wonder if there's a way, and I guess I'm just speaking out loud at this point. The wells that are gonna be closed because they're hooking on to, uh, MWRA would be available water for you to use, if not MWRA water?
I guess depends on where it is and how much it would cost to pipe it. Again, we are limited in how much water we can draw for the golf course, so, you know, regardless, by regulation, there's a certain, yeah, there's a certain amount, it's roughly a hundred thousand gallons a day. So, we're, we haven't run into a situation where we haven't been able to get to a hundred thousand a day without a problem with anything. I'm gonna get the numbers around a little bit, but, um, so we're regulated by that. So, even if there's all this extra water, by regulation, we can't use it.
So, to use those wells, Mr. Yul, we would have to make a significant capital investment to continue those to operate at a level they're at today.
Well, I, I understand that, yeah, that's a good point.
It's one of the reasons why we're making this move to MWRA, is because of that.
Yeah, but from a proximity standpoint, there's a central street location for the wells, but, which is just up the street from Hillview, but, again, significant infrastructure would have to be invested to, to do it, and we're not having a problem, since we're sitting over in Aquifer, finding water.
Finding water.
Yeah, so there isn't a need to pipe it in.
Right.
Just, you're restricted on how much you can...
We're restricted, unfortunately.
Just thinking out of the box.
Have you ever thought about going in for requesting an increase?
Yes, we have. We're hoping with, uh, maybe as, as the town starts going to the MWRA, maybe we get a little bit relief.
We're gonna have a significant availability off the drain of the, of South River, so hopefully that'll give you some justification.
Yeah, we would, we would love to have an increase. I think it would certainly help the golfers.
It would certainly help us maintain that investment, no doubt.
And then, as far as that GFMI contract, uh, that expires when? Is, is it a calendar year, or is it a...
They're, they're calendar years.
They're calendar years, so it's probably into the next fiscal year, rather than this fiscal year?
Next December, right.
Okay.
So, we're starting the process.
Right.
We'll see.
So, as far as budgeting for anything that's not necessary yet?
It's not necessary.
Then hopefully we get the bidding done, so we would know how to budget for the following fiscal year.
Yeah, we're in the process.
You have a warrant article, too?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I understand, and the commission's interested in seeking from town meeting the authority to let out a contract for up to five years for the management of the course.
With Mr. Yehber, a course or with the, uh, no, the functional?
The golf course management, as I understand.
Yeah, that, the, we have a meeting Wednesday, there's discussions going on about that.
Okay. No, no, no final decision?
No final decision, yes.
So, we may need a placeholder?
We may need a placeholder, um, you know, the GFMI has done a very good job over the last fifteen, twenty years. Last couple of years, we've had some issues. We're debating the positive and negatives of doing it.
So, yeah, so just to, for the other board members' information, there may be a warrant article requested on behalf of Hillview to allow for an extension of time in the contracting of services from three to five, from three to five years. That's five, three to five years. But we'll await their request.
Is that, um, just a one-time or option to renew with the same number for you?
It's an up to, and with an option, five and five.
Right now, we're three and three, so there's been discussions about whether or not we would get, we, we get very few people bidding when we put it out for the RFP. So, one, one discussion item is, you know, we went five and five, would we get someone else interested, other people interested, because it's a longer period of time to, to, to put a more investment into the facility, so... It's an RFP conversation with the committee.
Any other questions, or, uh, to Hillview? Yeah?
Yeah, Peter, uh...
Yeah?
Could you remind me where we're at in that, uh, agreement to, um, delay payment of taxes for that order of structure project?
Um, we're on year four, three or four, yeah. Four, yeah, we're in year four of the, of the four year that was requested.
So, don't anticipate any payment of lower taxes for this year. FY19, it's on Liz's radar. Any other questions, so Peter? No? Peter, thank you very much, and good, best to the commission, and thanks for their work.
Parks and Recreation.
All right, you're up. Lauren Stevens, Operations Director for the Parks and Recreation Budget for fiscal year 2018. This is who we are. We have three directors, the operations, charge of the money, parks, in charge of parks, the recreation, in charge of the recreation, and we have, those are, um, funded with the subsidy that we've been, uh, given by the town. People below that, the secretary, parks foreman, programmer, special heavy equipment operator are not funded in that subsidy, they're, they're funded by, uh, the enterprise account, with the exception of the parks foreman, who is, um, with the DPW budget. Recreation has, is quite a busy place. We have two thousand and thirteen member accounts in our system. It's, um, a lot of accounts that we take care of, and those are all separate accounts with many different family members in there. Last year, we took in forty-five hundred, forty-five thirty-seven in registrations, of which four thousand one hundred and fifty-four were residents and three hundred and eighty-three were non-residents. We were up forty-four percent from the prior year. This last year, we ordered, offered eighty-six programs, offered from ages zero all the way through ninety-nine. Um, we do morning, afternoon, evening, weekdays, weekends. Um, our summer is our biggest time. That's where generally most of our revenue will, will come from. One of the biggest programs we have in the summer is the summerscape program, and, um, it is a full-day program, Monday through Friday, seven-thirty a.m. to five-thirty p.m. And last year, we had two hundred and ninety-one children in it, and we, that office field trips, and many things during, during the day they walked in. And last year, we had two hundred and ninety-one children in it, and we, that office field trips, and many things during, during the day, they walked into River Park. Um, they take the field trips, they have all types of theme days, and last year, it was at the batch. Very successful. That's ages, grades one and up. Uh, our Kid Connection Program, that runs four days a week, nine to one, we had sixty-two children in that, um, that runs um, for preschoolers. So basically, ages three to five, we'll say, some of them are almost three and some are a little over five, for the most part, that's the general consensus of what the Kid Connection, same thing, that's run at the Recreation Center, um, and a very successful program as well. We also offered last year twenty-nine clinics and programs in the summer, and that ran from everything basketball, volleyball, field hockey, soccer, um, just, any, anything cheerleading, science, everything that we ran. There was something going every single week for a parent to sign up the children for. We offer trips, day, overnight, and week. We're going to Nashville this year, we're going, we're going to a lot of places this year. Not that we go, we send everybody else off. And we offer many, many, many discount tickets for the community to um, take advantage of the discounts. There's some of our summerscape kids from two thousand and sixteen posing for you. Um, they had a great year and they loved it. It's a, it's a really great program. Parks and Field Maintenance, the permits and scheduling, we did sixty-six hundred hours of scheduling and three hundred and fifteen permits, we were up thirty percent on the permits. We mow about ninety-three acres. Last year, the special projects were Chestnut Street Soccer Field, we removed the softball field, it's been converted into an all soccer field complex. Um, that was done by the Parks Crew, um, and some of the DPW helped out on that. Uh, we have, now have at the high school, the new softball and multipurpose fields at the high school, which Marty Tilton was a um, member of that group, who really pushed it forward to get all the donations, so that that, uh, those fields could get built and funded. Um, Benevento improvements through the state grant, um, due to their state championship celebration that's gonna be happening this year at Benevento. A lot of improvements have been made, the Parks Director's been there at every step of the way to see what's going on, and it's been a, it's been a big, a big deal over there. So that's gonna be a really, um, a, a nice ju, you know, nice summer over there, they're gonna see tons of improvements. So, these are the parks we do, um, you must all know them, Benevento Park with the Little League Fields, their concession stands, batting cages, Chestnut Street, um, the softball field's no longer there, even though it shows it's there, it's a mistake, but um. And then Clark Park, we have the boat dock, the sand volleyball court, asphalt court, the whole bit. Um, and that's used, that's actually rented quite a bit, Clark Park. And here we are at Ipsut River Park, which was awarded by Ready Magazine as the best scenic place in two thousand and seventeen, so I'm very proud of that. Um, and it's also rated five stars by Google Reviews, so we get a lot of reviews coming to us, that, um, people that go to it, they can rate it on Google, and it's rated five stars out of five. So that's a um, nice thing to see, I'm proud of that, too. Um, just to mention something about Ipsut River Park, it is hitting its twentieth year of opening this year. Um, and the anniversary celebration that we're going to be announcing, whoops, is going to be on Wednesday, June twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. And so far, our plans are petting zoos, music, barbecue, raffles, and more, and you're gonna, we're gonna have some fun stuff going back to nineteen ninety-seven, and there's gonna be a lot of invitations going out to all those who were involved in the opening of it in nineteen ninety-seven, so look for your invites on that. Once we get past this, once we got past the wine and food, we're gonna be jumping in on this, so. The Ipsut River Park, it has many things, as you can see, the rec center, um, parks facilities, soccer fields, Little League fields, and the list goes on. We all know that that park has everything that one could ask and more. The Rita J. Mullin Field, very widely used for softball, like football, field hockey, all kinds of things. It's a multipurpose field. Um, Town Hall Field, same thing, it's done by youth softball clubs, softball field, PB Soccer, after-school gym clubs by us, again, another field. North Parish Park is just basically a small playground with some flowers and plantings of Black Paul picnic area, and Park Street has its little basketball court. The nice picture of the Arthur J. Tinney, Kenny Turf Field, which was given to us. Um, and then we know the turf field has all the features and all the good things that go along with that. Community, we do this and more for the community, um, helping them out with whatever they need, whether it's um, tables, or they need volunteers, or whatever they need, they need to use a park with, and usually they had to help them out. Or whether it's some type of sound system or anything, it would be, we're usually there to help them. Picture from the, the line at the, the food for the barbecue series two thousand and sixteen, the lines were long, but we got them through it, it was a very successful one last year. Again, how we get the word out, we have our online registration, we have the town website, Ipsut River Park has its own website, we have our Facebook, we do email blasts, we have brochures, re-editions. That is, the cost is fully sponsored by advertising, that Maria Brown is the one that gets all our advertising. We do the banner program, we advertise our events and programs within the banners at key locations, and obviously the Town Hall Office here, which is fully staffed every day. And then we get to the meat of the matter, we get to our budget. So, basically, our budget is an enterprise budget, and we are, um, basically, we have some increases in our costs, but for the town, we're looking to level line our subsidy request for um, the three positions. So we're gonna level that to the same as we were, which is gonna be, I'm just gonna jump to it and I'll jump back. The salaries for the directors, two eleven zero nine nine, we're gonna level that to Fiscal Year seventeen. Um, if there's anything that's needed, we'll take it out of our own funding, if it goes above that. I budget it higher than that, in my budget, but um, to level it to two thousand, two hundred and eleven oh nine nine, we've done that. And to do that, our line items will come across this way, the salaries, personnel benefits, administrative, um, parks utilities and recreation and what have you. So it comes down that we're asking the town for the same amount of money in Fiscal Year seventeen, um, for the subsidy. And we have had our own increases, and we've had a lot of decreases, we're not paying for our health insurance, we don't have it budgeted this year, because everyone that needed it is no longer on our rolls, we've had some changes in our personnel, um, which brought our personnel down. Um, people have moved up, and new people have come in, they're in a junior position, and the same thing's gonna happen in our office, our, we have not hired a programmer quite yet, but they will come in under the cost of a tenured programmer who is left. So, um, our costs have gone down in that regard. Uh, we are expecting to use a little bit of retained earnings, um, because our capital, we're looking to, um, let's see if I can get to that. Our capital, we're looking to purchase two items. Um, they are gonna be a new mower and a blower for the Parks Department, and that will come in um, at the amount of, let's see, this line is getting up, twenty-five thousand seven oh two. So that need for retained earnings is to help us balance that budget to get to that point. So, um, I don't know what questions you would have within the body of this. This is all our detail of electricity, heat, the maintenance, park supplies, and what have you, there's a lot of that going on in there. And then we also have, this is our personnel schedule, where we have all our personnel listed, this is where the four sixty-three comes in. This is our seasonal staff, concession staffs, recreation program staffs, permanent staff, is all detailed in there and factored. And um, again, we're back to that, so our salary is at four sixty-three, seven fifty-five.
Maureen, in relation to retained earnings, what's the retained earnings amount in the enterprise now?
The retained earnings is, um, it's kinda small, I can't see it. Right now, we have a hundred and ninety-one thousand.
The number is lo, small, or the?
No, I would love to, it's big, the printing is small, the amount is big. So the retained earnings right now is a hundred and ninety-one thousand eight oh four. Um, it is an increase la, over last year of sixty-four thousand dollars, so that's what it is, as of June thirtieth, that's what it was certified at.
Alaska.
Mm-hmm, it is. We do have some thoughts and processes that we'd like to keep it there, because we have some major things coming our way. When it comes to that money, we have some capital improvements for the future that are not yet determined. Um, we are, we're in need of paving the walkways, and the Parks Director can answer any questions about this. The loop, which is a half a mile around Ipsut River Park, and all the walkways within Ipsut River Park, equal one mile. Um, it has been told by us that for us to get that done by our vendor, it would be sixty-three thousand dollars to have them all done. Marty's told, he had some crack filled on, and he's been working on it.
Sixty-three per each half mile, so.
Yeah.
So a hundred and twenty-six.
Yeah.
So they, right, if we do.
The loop is a half mile.
And obviously, the condition, it's deteriorating a bit.
Yeah.
So if we were to do some, one.
So what, what is the anticipated timeline, or is there an anticipated timeline as far as redo, what are we gonna do, grind it?
No, we just don't go over.
Just to go over?
Just go, no, that was, um, that was, I recommend, just go right over it.
Because I, I just know, to have a walk.
There's certain areas.
My wife gets me out once in a while to walk.
There's certain areas that would have to be taken out, but overall, would just be a go.
Timeline, are you anticipating going out to do it, or you're just thinking about it two fiscal years out, or?
Um, it all, you know, it, they all have a discussion with the committee and stuff, whatever, priority, but I think we got, pray it out, because these are things that are gonna have to be done eventually.
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
From a visual standpoint, and having worked it, there's some areas that are in need of repair.
Yeah, but we've done that, we've done different sections here and there, you know, and that just doesn't look right, and it'll hold up, trying to wind in certain areas, so. We've continued to do the bad areas, but, you know, it needs to be done, it's been twenty years, so. We've had a lot of ideas of maybe utilizing the DPW, which would bring that cost way down, um, if that price is thrown down, so.
But again, from a timeline standpoint?
Year or two, yeah, yeah, well, depends on the weather, too, I mean, it goes from, you drove for the last two years, and now the walkways from this come, come to the water today, you know.
Abby?
So, um, Marty, you, you don't have a, you know, five-year capital plan in the water, so would you plow things in?
Yes, we do, this was, this was on, this was one of us going, going back, so we're getting up to there, we're just trying to prioritize what we need to do.
This has been on his plan every year, four of our five years?
Yeah, this has been on for quite a while.
And they've asked him if they, he could continue to push it?
Done?
Maureen, the, your retained earnings is about a hundred and ninety-two thousand, did you say it was sixty-five a year ago?
No, it, it was, um.
It's up sixty-five.
A year ago, it was one twenty-seven, so it went up.
So, please, you, all right.
Sixty-four thousand in a year.
You're, you're likely to be running revenues higher than expenses, just looking at, at your budget, you're, you're budgeting conservatively, which is, which is a good idea. But you're, you're building up the retained earnings, if you added another fifty or sixty thousand to it.
Right.
This year, it's a pretty, it's getting to be a pretty big number, and I, I can't see what you have up there, but.
Yeah, it's kinda tough.
Would be nice to see what your plans are out over the next five years for, for whatever big things, you know, the, the walkway, that, that's fine, and I understand that we need to do it, but. Just to determine how much of the hundred and, whatever it is, that right now, a hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Right.
Of that you're going to need, what you need to grow it by in order to take care of the capital needs.
Right.
That you, that you foresee now, and then something for emergencies, you don't, you don't know what's gonna happen.
Right.
Could you say a bit more about what other things?
Sure.
Could come up?
Um, one of, the other, one of the things that's under the paving of the walkways is the Recreation Center. Um, it's come to Marty's attention that Lynn would like the Recreation Center paved, all in that general area, um, because of the safety issues, the dust issues, the icing issues, and um, and so on and so forth. So Marty has looked into that as well, and the cost of that, comes in again, we're using a vendor, about, just the area that we would do, we're not gonna pave all the way to the barn or anything, or pave where the, uh, school buses are, but the areas was about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So that's, again, on a, a, within a two-year item, if not, we can't, she would like it done immediately, she just feels it's a complete safety problem with the ice. Um, the other thing is, Marty looked into the turf field, and that's something that maybe Marty could speak to a little bit more, is those worn areas, do we have to replace the entire turf field? Or, you know, carpet, that's always been the thing, oh, you're gonna replace the entire thing, but that's not the case, so I'll have Marty speak on that.
For the most part, the, um, the turf field's in excellent condition, um, but, you know, you have, just like any other, even if it's grass field, certain worn areas, whether it's, uh, glider mowers on soccer, or the lacrosse, the rounde creases, um, basically right up the middle. So, we could just basically take care of those sections and not worry about five hundred thousand dollars to replace the whole carpet, because that's what it would cost. Um, they can maybe do, save one end of a hole, end of crease, of lacrosse, that'd be like five thousand dollars for one end, five thousand dollars for the other. Um, if we give a hole right up the middle, the hole, you know, a good section wide, then it's probably, you're looking at one hundred thousand dollars.
It's, it's POC's and Rec's responsibility to replace that carpet as needed?
That's what we've been told, yes. I mean, when we, when we got it at Hillview, and it became parkland, and we became the managers of it, that's what we were told, so, um, you know, the whole fear has been that we would have to replace the whole carpet, and how would we come up with another eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars to do it? Or what would the cost be when it was needed? And I know Marty's been doing a great job in doing his maintenance plan to make sure that the turf stays in the condition that it is, and that's why we don't plow it, and that's why we don't want people shoveling it, because it deteriorates it at a rapid rate, and it just, it just elongates it. So, um, those are the things that we will have to do. Uh, he, he said, what'd you say, within the next three to five years, there'll be spots that are gonna have to be done?
Yeah.
So it's gonna be ten thousand, ten thousand?
Um, if the committee would really appreciate seeing a five-year capital plan from you guys.
Okay.
That gives us, I understand that it's an organic process.
Mm-hmm.
And that things can change, and priorities can change.
Right.
But we're getting sort of little bits and pieces.
Okay.
Um, if you could, if you would like to be sometime in the next week or two.
Sure.
That'd be great.
So we'll give you the, the timeline of the year, that it's anticipated with the approximate goal. There's some other things that, um, have come up that I've mentioned to Marty, and I've mentioned it to Lynn, that even in the rec center, the garages are kind of a non-useable throwaway space. And currently, we're going up and down a set of stairs, upstairs, there's no, um, heat up there, and that's where, another area where we have people, um, putting the other welcome bags for the town, and, you know, where we prep a lot of things, so the garage would be another, you know, easy access first floor. And it has, it definitely has maybe the bones for it, but it would have to be investigated, um, whether it be just for us, or if it could even be offices in the future. Might be something that we could look into, something like that, it's definitely an investigation process to see if it's even something that could even be rehabbed, or would have to be torn down, we're not really sure. So, yeah, one of five, absolutely, if I get one.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to the turf field, um, what is the average maintenance cost for the turf field now? Do you, eventually, I mean, it's on a fifteen-year, um, bonding, so. When will we need to eventually replace that whole carpet? Because you're piecemealing it now, because you can, and it's, it's feasible to do that, but eventually, you're not gonna want to piecemeal it all back together again, you're gonna have to be.
Like I said, I mean, um, the perimeter of it is, you know, right, with the section right up the middle, is in excellent condition, so it's almost brand new, we have it being painted in, um, spring, and the fall. You can remember the machine that comes actually in and sifts out all the.
Right.
Trash.
Right.
Here, pins, everything, puts the rubber back down, and when they leave there, it looks brand new. Um, we, so we do that twice a year, and that's twenty-five hundred, all these chunks, that's five thousand dollars a year to have that done. Um, and then we maintain it ourselves.
But overall, yeah.
Every day, we clean the trash, and just, um, keep moving the rubber in and boards.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned about the field. Yeah, and I'm just concerned about the field, not, not the stands or anything like that, because they support themselves, but the, the-
They don't know, because when they, when they originally put it in, it was new technology, that the turf keeps growing each year, the technology of it. So, I mean, they threw out a number of what it could be, but, I mean, the, the people that install it and the people that maintain it, and I get a report on it each time they do that, and they always tell me, you know, it's in excellent shape, it's in excellent shape, so.
So, so we don't know, I mean, will it outlast the bond or will it?
I believe so, always.
Yeah. So we should get twenty years out of it?
I would guess.
Not the entire thing, but if you allow them to repairs-
Right, repairs are repairs, right.
The middle, yeah.
Because that's-
Absolutely.
Mr. Prisco?
So just to refresh my memory on this, so we have a MOU with the school. So the school uses that field eighty percent of the time, would you say?
Please.
All the use? And so when they collect money for football games, they collect money for soccer games and lacrosse games, we get none of that money, correct? That goes back into that field? Zero. So you, so where does the money come for these maintenance and these-
We split, actually, the maintenance, the twenty-five hundred each time, so it'll be one season, I do deal with-
Will you be splitting these costs as well?
Um, we'll get into it, but I've been to the key panel, I don't think so.
Tough enough to get to split five thousand.
Just in case the board members forgot, you know, and I'm not saying this is good or bad.
True, I mean, we've taken on the burden of maintaining it.
It was an agreement that you guys entered into.
Without the ability to get the revenue to us.
And, but, you know, with somebody using the field eighty percent of the time and we're picking up a hundred percent of the cost, I don't know how FinCon feels about it, but it doesn't sit with me too well. I just think this needs to be a little reasonable discussion on this as we go forward.
Right.
That MOU should be probably resurrected again and maybe-
We talked about this, so I don't think they're oblivious to it, you know, they know this is gonna be, so.
May not be oblivious, but they don't bring it up.
No, it's not, everyone's a little worried about it.
I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory on this, and I'm not trying to point a finger, I just think this is a discussion that it's, if you do what you're talking about here, that field will get twenty years out of it. If we just neglect it and turn our back to it, we're not.
Yeah, but you're not, but you're still doing a terrific job on it.
And then it comes to where do we get the money? And it's not in the, the capital plan for the CIP, so, and it's not in the schools. And it's, you know, you can't put this on the backs of the user, the parents that are paying all the rates to have their kids participate in your recreation programs and your sports programs. It just wouldn't be right. I wouldn't support that, so there needs to be another discussion, and I'm not sure what point we do that. And is this an FY eighteen or is this a beyond eighteen?
This is FY eighteen, well, this is beyond eighteen, I mean, there's-
Beyond, that's just a-
Yeah.
So you don't wanna make those, you don't wanna make those patches in this coming fiscal year?
Don't believe so, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Not for the turf.
No, not for the turf.
Mr. Keller?
It is coming from the fees that they're charging for all of the programs, because it's coming out of the retained earnings. And their revenue is greater than their, the aggregate of all of their expenses, they're leaving this residual. And that's where it is a hundred and ninety-two thousand right now, and it's likely to grow by some amount, but that's what they're using for this. So it, it isn't a separate funding, that it's coming out of the operation of the enterprise.
Yeah, but you gotta look at that hundred and ninety-two thousand, okay? It's not for turf fields, they have wells.
I understand, that's for the whole, for the whole program. Instead of it, it's for whatever, whatever capital they need to do, and if they needed to bond something, that would be used for debt service. So the debt service would have to come out of their operating budget. Have you, they're, 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 they're doing, except the splitting of the maintenance, as I understand it, they're taking care of the, the, the annual maintenance you day one in the school base.
Yes, we do, and Marty generally meets with them quite often, and he strikes those deals as many times as he can. And they're generally receptive.
Mrs. Manuelli?
Just, so the money that they are collecting for the games and things like that is going back into this fund?
The money they're collecting for all the programs that Maureen-
Everything we do.
Listened before is all going into their-
Oh, that's her, her program, not the school department's.
Right.
It works very, I mean, it's an enterprise fund, they do the water department. The water department has to go out and buy a new truck. It's paid for by the water department enterprise from their retained earnings.
Yeah, the mowers and the blowers and the things that we need is-
The same thing with Hillview.
Being paid for out of our operating, out of our enterprise account, and if we need some from the retained, we budget that we'll need X amount in order to facilitate our expenses based against our revenues, so.
Just as far as revenues go and as far as participants in youth sports, the numbers are down in some.
Yeah, they're down.
How do you anticipate that impacting your operations?
Recreation's picking it up, recreation's programs are booming. So last year, they had one of the biggest summers we've ever had. Very, very, very successful between Kid Connection and Summer Escape, they're just huge programs. And, you know, having two, three hundred kids come to your program every day and they're paying twenty-five dollars, thirty dollars a day. And then we have so many councils that are there, we're very specific about knowing how many we need for the ratio and what we need for expenses and-
So as far as the, the impact of decreased membership and participation in some of the other organized sports-
Right.
You're less concerned than you may have been a couple of years ago or?
Well, actually, this year, a good portion of the main field, all back of IRP is gonna be shut down, because the overuse we've had with the school construction, with all the schools-
The last two years.
The last, probably even more than two years, we started, um, just in the meeting. So we're actually gonna be, gonna be down with you, just a good portion of that, we're shutting down. It's not like we're gonna be able to get it back, the grass back. We can't just keep seeding it and doing the maintenance on it and, you know, spending money on seed and just to have it properly get trampled on and be gone and, you know, you get down there, ladies and ladies.
So, I guess what, what, what I'm trying to get at a little bit is that you've had a decrease in the operational costs of sixty-some-odd thousand dollars or something like that, but you're still looking for a flat line as far as an appropriation from town meeting to help subsidize the program, which is fine. Can anticipation of things such as that decreases in revenues in other areas and then in hopes of retaining and adding to your retained earnings? Yes?
Adding to it, this year, I don't really see that we're gonna be adding too much. Last year was a good, good year, this year, it could be down, because I'm gonna, right now, I have to be a magician to schedule all the women and men's leagues in there, with one field and the turf and in between youth soccer, uh, youth lacrosse and the weather. So this could, most likely give me a lot of makeups or cancellations, a lot of people just go to another field, which will take a hit, but it's worth it for the, the field, so there'll be a little bit of a downturn, but we're okay. You know, we have kind of factored that, Marty told me, you know, more than a year ago, so we're not too worried about being, our budget being too crunched. It's not necessarily, the youth sports are all taken care of between Chestnut Street, the turf field, the baseball fields and things like that, they shouldn't see, they shouldn't even really see a bump. It's the adult fields and, um, club sports are taking a little bit of a bump. But we, we try to shift and we try to tell them to be more creative on those fields, to be a little bit, start a little earlier and a little later. We know you wanna be done by four o'clock in the afternoon, but the sun's out till seven. So if you wanna get your game in, you wanna play at Ipsut River Park, you might have to play till six, seven o'clock. So that's what we're trying to, trying to do to keep the revenue still there, and, but then again, that still takes impact on the one field that's left, so. We're, you know, we're trying to put them over to the turf field and offer them playing under the lights on even Saturday nights on a makeup or a Friday night as well, because, you know, it's, it is kinda nice, you know, some of the adult people go for it, some of them like, nah, I don't, I don't wanna do that, it's my Friday night, I don't wanna do that, I play Sunday morning. So we're, we're working with them to try to get them where they need to be.
Any other questions on recreation? Nope? All right, Maureen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just another note, I wanna thank all of those who were able to attend, purchased a ticket, sponsored our Wine and Food Social, it was a wonderful event. The weather didn't seem to deter many people from coming, we had a very good crowd and a wonderful time, and we thank Maria Brom for stepping up. She stepped into the role that Sheila Servant did, she did a phenomenal job, and I don't know how we would've done without her. And, you know, all, all the volunteers who come, whether they're high school seniors, on the senior rebate program, our staff, people from Town Hall that volunteered, they did an excellent, excellent job, and we really appreciate their help. It was really great, and we look forward to the twentieth celebration, and you all got a little news brief on that as to what it is. That'll be fun, that'll be a lot of fun. So it'll be just like, what, twenty years ago, prices are going down twenty years and it'll be, it'll be a good time.
Thank you very much.
And I'll get that done, wait up to you.
Sure. So Liz, you're up.
So finance and accounting, five minutes, there's two segments, one is labeled finance director and the other is just labeled accounting. One of the major changes is shifting my salary all to the finance budget, where in previous years, only a portion of mine was, which was considered a stipend for being a finance director. So that has been moved to the finance division. The other line item in the finance division would be the assistant finance director. Those are the two items that are in that budget. So it's strictly personal services within the finance division. And then moving on to accounting, the changes in accounting that you will see is the reduction in personal services. It's not one for one, there has been, the clerical contract was settled, and the administrative assistant, who is part of the clerical union, also being a great work position, receives a stipend under the new contract, so there's step increases, the contract settlement as well as a new stipend. There was a slight increase in professional services accounting, which has to do with our actuarial study. There's been some changes under the GAZB rules. And in order for us to have either a presentation each year or for our audit, where they have to update the figures annually, that's the increased cost for the actuary. Training and education is a slight increase, this is to send my staff to the Munis Conference, which in April of twenty eighteen will be in Boston. And then the two line items under other charges and expenses, which dues in memberships and subscriptions. The dues in memberships is an increase to one of the accounting organizations that I belong to. And the subscription is the annual cost of having a Wi-Fi hotspot, so those are the changes.
Any questions?
The Wi-Fi hotspot, refresh my memory, why are you even?
So if I go to, say, a conference or a meeting in Boston, there's no Wi-Fi that may be open to the public. That's happened to me quite a few times, so.
Liz needs access.
To always be able to connect, but I, I don't put in for a cell phone reimbursement, so it's kind of a swap.
Okay, good. I forgot you don't put in for a cell phone, because Verizon has this new plan now, unlimited data, which your phone is automatically a hotspot and you save yourself five hundred bucks, but, you know.
It's actually cheaper than what the cell phone stipend is, so it's thirty-nine dollars a month and-
Trying to save you five hundred bucks, it means nothing, move on, I'm good. The rest of it though, surprised in you and Michael, I gotta tell you, I'm very disappointed in both of you. I am. We had this conversation last year and nothing changed in this budget. We had a lengthy conversation last year, and if you don't remember it, go back and look at the video. And I'm not even gonna have this discussion. I'm voting against this budget, just so you know. You guys got short memories.
If I am understanding what you're referring to, Michael and I have had lengthy discussions. We've actually also had discussions with the new HR director in regards to that position. So I think that the three of us should probably sit down and meet-
Which position, what are we talking about?
The assistant finance director position.
We still allow people to work from home, it's not something that we should, we should encourage or continue to do. And we talked about this last year, and I don't wanna get into a lengthy discussion again, but it's a bad precedent, because it's, it's gonna snowball on you. Because what stops the next person from coming into the city of the town administrator or CEO and says, I wanna work from home? It's not about the person, it's nothing about the position, it's about the practice, and I'm not, I'm against it. It's not right. We're a professional organization and we should work full-time. You need the help. I see the ops tempo that comes out of our office, and, you know, again, go, go back and watch the video from last year. I'll be voting against this one.
I guess I'm, I'm just more results oriented, and it seems to be-
But, but it's sweat equity at this point.
I'm very satisfied with the information, the flow of information, the quality of information, timeliness of information.
Yeah, but at what cost?
It's working.
You're burning people out. But if you wanna continue to let people burn out-
No, no, I mean, I have to trust, I have to entrust, you know, these two people to-
Bingo.
Uh, administer, administer-
I wanna see a finance director here for a long time.
And I haven't heard an awful lot of issues or complaints about it, but I maybe not hearing from the same people.
Well, you know why, it's not broken for you, it's not broken for me. But I, you and I both know what happens behind those doors over there. You know, and the lights are on at eight o'clock at night, eight-thirty at night, ten o'clock at night. You know, we're home with our families and they're not, so, yeah, because we're, so we can get the information, it's not broken. And, you know, and I have an issue with people working from home, I do. And I, it's something I never believed in.
Any questions, comments, or Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do recall the discussions that date back two years with regard to the issue of employees working from home, and it's something that I, I share the concern with regard to, and it's something that we have sought to scale back in my time here, not to the point that it's, it is very limited at this point, and the instances beyond that limitation are isolated at best. We've also seen where the structure in the office was pretty regimented, we've moved away to reduce the number of hours that that's taken place. It's not gone away, by, by, I think, everybody's admission, but it is something that through my discussions with the finance director, we believe that the value we've been receiving is, has been worthwhile for the town in terms of the expenditure of the dollars. That said, the practice is one that's of concern to me and has been. The issues of the sustainability of the operation of the, the department is something that's a concern, not just in terms of the financials, but in terms of some of the other responsibilities that the department has carried over the past couple of years. I think we're making progress with regard to some of those responsibilities with the advent of the staffing and human resources office. I think we're, we're, we're making progress. Are we there a hundred percent? No. Am I concerned for the sustainability of the office? Yes. Is what's being discussed gonna solve the issues? I think the finance director and I aren't certain that that will necessarily solve it, but I think we recognize that there is an issue that we need to solve, and it's not related to a position in the office, but more the long-term sustainability of what that office puts up.
And I look at it with an additional look of, from a management standpoint, as the leader, as the CEO of your staff, you also have to balance what you're placing on them, what it's taking them to get the job done. And it does come to a point where certain people will get burnt out, and then we don't have them here next year or the year after, because there's only so much you can, there's only so long you can do that. You can only work at that ops tempo for so long, and we need the finance director to be a finance director. And we need the Finance Director to be a Finance Director. And we need, in my mind, an Assistant Finance Director to be the Assistant Finance Director. And that means when you open up in the morning, when you go home at night. And you can't do that from a remote area. And my view on it is a lot goes through that office, especially personnel issues. To me, logically, it falls within the Assistant Finance Director's responsibilities. So they, so your CFO can be the CFO. It's just operational, that's all. I want to see how the money invested, the way we invest it. That's what we've done. That's, if you go and read the position scripts and you read the organizational chart that you put forward, that's the way your operations on paper is supposed to run. But it's not.
Good, healthy discussion we weren't gonna have.
No, I gotta, I gotta agree. If you'd just let it go, if we didn't say anything, I wouldn't move on.
I think it was me. I think I got it going. It's all right. Any other questions regarding Finance, Accounting?
This is only a two-person department?
I'm sorry?
Isn't this only a two-person department? Am I looking at this wrong?
The Accounting Finance Department is stacked with the Finance Director, Town Accountant, the Assistant Finance Director, Assistant Town Accountant, an Administrative Assistant, and an Accounting Analyst.
Yeah.
The Accounting Analyst position was added two, two years ago.
Okay. I'm specifically looking at you and your assistant. That's what we're talking about, right?
It's broken down, yes. The, in the Finance Division, it's myself and the Assistant Finance Director, then Accounting has an Accounting Analyst and an Administrative Assistant. We could combine the two departments essentially.
Is your assistant a full-time assistant?
It's 30 hours a week.
Mr. Chairman, through you, there are two budgets that fall under this category. There, there technically are three, but one of them is Human Resources and we took it separately at a prior hearing. The two that remain, the Board of Selectment Budget, two changes in the FY18 request for the Board's budget. The first is an adjustment in non-union wages that's contractual, the amount of $401. The second is an anticipated increase in the MMA, Membership Dues for the Town of approximately $200, although you await a final number from the MMA. The second budget, the Town Administrator's Budget, the adjustments are as follows. Contractual adjustments for the Department Head and the Non-Union Employee in the amount of $6,609. Advertising, increased $200 to reflect actual costs. Leases and Rentals, this is a reduction of $5,000, which would allocate the cost of the reverse 911 into the Water Enterprise. Professional Services, $250 increase to reflect actual and anticipated increase in costs. $500 for Printing, which reflects increased costs for Printing. $650 reflects actual and anticipated increases in costs for postage. And then $1,000 reflects the actual and anticipated increase in cost for hosting Town Meetings. And when we look back a year from now at the fiscal year 2017 budget, we'll see that there'll be a bump in the cost of Town Meeting. It's obviously gonna be tied to the third meeting that we had in March. We're not forecasting any additional Town Meeting for next year, but if there is and there's a challenge, then we'll deal with it in next year's budget.
Any questions, discussion? Michael?
Education, Training and Education. Where does that fall again? I forget.
Speaking of tuition reimbursement?
Yeah.
Yes, in the Human Resources Budget. And I believe that Mr. Collins had a request in his budget for two employees? Is that correct? Turn around.
One employee.
One employee.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, with regard to the larger operating departments, those requests would be within their particular budgets. Police, Fire, and DBW.
Any other questions?
Pretty simple.
Well, that concludes our budget hearings for the evening. And we're only eight minutes behind schedule. Pretty good, other than the first half hour we missed. Thompson Club DBA TCC Grill seasonal license renewal, leave the Board had asked that Representatives from Thompson Club come and just fill us in as to what the current situation is, what the, this request, or maybe a future request may be. Because there were some questions in relation to some knowledge that some members of the Board had, had heard through the community that some change in personnel and operations there. So why don't you give us a, Mr. Houghton?
Yes, do you want me to speak here?
Whatever you're most comfortable with, just identify yourself for the record.
For the record, my name is Attorney Tim Houghton, H-O-U-T-E-N. I'm also an attorney, but I'm also the Secretary of the Thompson Club. Just to give you a little brief history, just so you remember, last year, the Thompson Club built a grill room on the second floor. I came in to get a license for that. At the time, we had a manager, her name was Anna Pepe. She came in, and this Board was nice enough to appoint her as the manager. It just, it didn't work out. In August of last year, Ms. Pepe left. At that time, I came forward. Joe McCarthy became the manager at that point. He had TIPS certified and ran the restaurant till the end of the year. This year, we put in for the renewals. At that time, we were actively searching for a new manager. Mr. McCarthy stayed on, was gracious enough to put his name forward to stay on as manager while we looked. Since we put in those renewals, as some may know or may not know, we've put in two, now two applications for a change of manager to Mr. Kabor. That will, I believe, be acted on by this Board at your next meeting. So we're talking, whenever that, whenever you folks tell me it's, it's gonna be on, that's when it'll be on. So you, what we're here tonight is to allow Mr. McCarthy to remain as the manager until and if you approve the change of manager at your next meeting. Should be noted that as far as management goes right now, as we all just look outside, you can guess that we're not open. There's really nothing to manage. The snow is on the ground, the people aren't golfing, the people aren't there. We don't anticipate probably being open for maybe two weeks, but you never know. What we did discover, and I'll give you, this is probably more you're gonna hear about next year, is we, we, we had envisioned ourselves as being kind of a restaurant that would serve people dinner after, at nights and stuff. And what we discovered is that we're pretty much governed by darkness. That people go there, when they golf and it's light, they'll stay, have a, have a drink, have something to eat after they golf, but people weren't coming in that weren't golfing. So because of that, and Ms. Pepe was looking more for a restaurant, which is why it didn't work out. So we're discovering, we're adapting. And so what we have is, we have a grill room that's really, it's, it's for the golfers. People finish golfing, they're gonna go for a drink, they're gonna eat. But, so we're just asking that you continue, allow Mr. McCarthy, Mr. McCarthy has gone, has been fingerprinted, he is still TIPS certified, to run the restaurant and when we come back before you at, at your next meeting. So tell me to, then we will present Mr. Kabor for the two other licenses.
Debbie?
The grill is only open to golfers.
Correct. And members of the green who are, are in. So we had envisioned that people would come by, like, leave the green, you're in the house, you come over at seven o'clock at night, have dinner. It never really worked out. People who are golfing would come over. Our, our actually high time is probably on a Saturday from 12 to 6. That's like the biggest time we have the most people at that.
Mr. Yul?
I'm trying to think back, I guess it's just over a year ago. The, it, it, obviously, it's only open to membership.
Correct.
Correct. So nobody could come from, going to Teresa's would be persuaded to go.
Unless I invited you to golf with me and I took you for a sandwich out.
Right. I'm your guest.
You have to be, there has to be a member with you, yes.
Let me know, okay?
Is there a reason for that?
It's a private club, private club license.
Right.
Okay.
We don't have, if, if we didn't have what's called a club license, we would, it would be a general license and we couldn't refuse to serve anybody. Anybody could walk in there and, and at any time. But it is a separate club license which restricts it of who we can serve.
Right, okay. All right, then, then I guess that answers my question. Thank you.
So was this before us because they didn't put their renewal application in?
No, the renewal was, was timely because it's a seasonal.
Okay.
Private, club license. The question came about, Michael and I had some questions in relation to what we had heard as to who was operating, what the operation was op, what was, what was happening there?
Sure.
And we weren't sure and we weren't, the Board wasn't fully informed. Again, I don't know how often Mr. McCarthy's on-site.
Mr. McCarthy is, Mr. McCarthy practically lives there. He's there, you know, and especially this time of year, setting up, you know, in addition to presidency, he, I mean, he, he does everything but wash the dishes.
I'm the President and I do not get paid, but usually I'm there all year, three, four days a week. So.
In the winter he goes.
Maybe I go away from last week.
Yeah, I think most of the concern that some of the Board members had or have, or continue to have is, you know, if we have a license in someone's name, you know, it's anticipated that they're there during the operation
Yes.
of the facility during operating hours.
Yeah.
Tough to get volunteers, maybe it's not too difficult to get volunteers to do that on a regular basis, but they're ultimately responsible for the operation of what's going on there and it's anticipated that they're putting in almost full-time. Confused about this. And having done this. And as Ms. Pepe was, she was going to be there.
Right. And having done this with other, in, in my time, I, some of you may know I'm the Selectman of Middleton, we have the Ferncroft, and one of the biggest problems we have with the Ferncroft is that it's the hotel business. And they change managers quicker than they change pants. And one of the things that we don't like is we, A, don't like to have a manager not on-premise, and B, we don't like to have a manager and then manager de jour. So the reason we renewed with Mr. McCarthy is because we knew Mr. McCarthy would be there. We were interviewing managers. We didn't want to put down Joe Smith. And then I come back to you two weeks later and say, "Hey, by the way, Joe Smith didn't work out." We were hoping to give him a couple of weeks, see if he understood business, because obviously you can see, Ms. Pepe had an idea that it was a restaurant. We needed someone that understands, this is a golf course, this is, this is not, it isn't Teresa's. This is, you know, this is a grill room for people that play golf and if they're comfortable with that and they can run, you know, live that, and I believe we do have that gentleman that can do that. So that was our, that was more for the Board. I didn't want to, I, I hate.
Obviously, from the position you've sat in over in Middleton, you can appreciate our concern as to
Oh, definitely.
what's going on, who's there, who's overseeing the operations. And that's why we're looking for an explanation.
Yeah, no. And Mr. McCarthy is there, like I said, more times than anybody, and he was there, you know, at the end of the year and this year, but we never intended him to be the full-time manager. We intended him to be the interim, because he's, you know, he's the jack of all trades.
I'm the President of the Board.
Just quickly, it's open seven days a week?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, it will be. It's not open at all right now.
No, I understand that, but when, once the season starts, it's open seven days a week. You're there all seven days?
Me?
Yes.
No.
Then, then.
I'm there, I said, four or five days.
That's what I thought, okay. So, so who? Do we need somebody TIPS certified to be in your place?
Yes, yeah.
Do we have that?
We hired a manager recently. We haven't started yet. He has to get the fingerprinted and so forth.
So is that gonna be, come before us?
Yes, yeah.
Not yet, but it will?
No, we presented, I, I filed the information.
What I, what I have asked, they've submitted both applications, a renewal and a change of manager.
Right.
For practical reasons, for state processing purposes, the ABCC can easily cross paperwork, which are actually delaying things for them. So I suggested, and tonight we'll take up the renewal of the license and at our next meeting, we'll take up the application for change of manager, which will allow the paperwork to be processed through the ABCC in a more
Yeah.
reasonable fashion with less chance of confusion.
Great. So can I make a motion?
Yes.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the seasonal club or alcohol license for Thompson Club Inc., DBA, TCC Grill to Mid Iron Drive to expire October 31, 2017, subject to all regulatory Department's requirements.
Second.
Motion, second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you announce.
Thank you very much. You know when I'll be?
We, that's later on on our agenda, but I'm anticipating the 24th?
Yes.
I'm anticipating the 24th.
Okay, great. I will.
With their acquiescence.
Okay, I, I'm sure I will file, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming in and explaining what's going on. That's great.
I was good.
I'm gonna listen to your bunch. It's a very good one.
Want to give an update?
I was gonna suggest we pass over it.
All right. We're gonna pass over Health Insurance Update.
Did you already do all the minutes?
2018 Budget Review Status. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I've asked the Finance Director to prepare a brief presentation just to provide an update to the Board as to where we stand in terms of the work of the Financial Planning Team. We have a couple of slides that we'll present here. The Board members should have seen in the packet the detailed revenue and expense plan from the March 10 Financial Planning Team meeting. There is a Financial Planning Team meeting scheduled for tomorrow, but I'll turn it over to the Finance Director at this point.
Okay, so basically, this is a snapshot of the March 10 revenue plan that was discussed at the Financial Planning Team meeting. There have not been many major changes since our last budget update, but it's a comparison between FY17 and FY18. We can go down, go down the list. We just have our tax levy and we have new growth. We have our debt exclusions, which would be, you know, the high school, middle school, Lee Station, various other school projects that are still in that figure. State aid numbers, which are based right now on the Governor's budget. This is an annual reimbursement that we receive under the old SBAB rather than the MSBA program, where they reimburse you over time versus where you get immediate reimbursement now under the new rules. Our local receipts you can see here, which are made up of motor vehicle excise tax, you know, in lieu of tax payments, license and permits, et cetera. Other financing sources, this is transfers from all different areas. It could be from the Debt Capital Stabilization Fund. It also has to do with water indirect costs. We have cell tower revenue, so forth. So those are some of the other financing sources. Then we come down to the bottom part where we have our budget breakdown. We have our fixed cost total, which is health insurance, life insurance, Medicare, our debt service, regional school assessments, our general liability insurance, our workers' comp insurance. So that's what goes into the fixed cost total. And then we come down to, we have the Town's level service budget and the Schools' level service budget for, this was voted at Town Meeting, and these are our anticipated FY18 budget submissions. And then we have the breakdown of available revenues, less, you know, what the, our budget, level service budget amounts are, and these are our shortfalls at this given point.
Almost there.
Do you think?
Interesting.
Any questions on this?
154,000's an interesting number.
Do you have a break in the name, sorry?
Through the chair, I think I'm gonna ask the same question.
Right, ask.
The red part, do you have a breakdown where we, how we got to those, to those gaps?
Of, of, you want to know the available revenue prior, is that what you're asking or?
No, the budget gap is really what I wanted to, do you have a separate?
Breakdown on that.
Breakdown of?
Of what makes up that budget gap?
Yes. How we got there in other words. What, what happened to get us there?
Well, it just has to do with the available revenue sources that we have from the above revenue items. Then when that is broken down, it's 66, 34. The Town gets 34% of total available revenue and the School Department gets 66%. So that is the difference between the fixed costs come off the top of our total revenue and then we have our level service budget, which leaves us with those deficits.
I, Kate, if I could maybe help you on this. I think the issue is, this isn't about level services. That's why it's red, right? And it's a clear fact.
These are level service budgets.
This is about level services. This is about maintaining the same programming and personnel, taking into consideration increased costs of operating for, whether it be health insurance and all the rest of fixed cost stuff, and then contractual obligations and increased operating costs for facilities. And at level services, both sides of the equation are in a deficit situation.
So it's level services with added FTEs to have the level services?
Mr. Gilberto.
In the case of the town's budget, I don't think there's a single new FTE that's in there.
Right.
And if I may, through you, Mr. Chairman, just to the question from Selectman, Selectman Minipelli. We went through a pretty extensive review of the fixed costs, I think, at a meeting about a month or so ago, maybe six weeks or so ago. The only change I would note is that we adjusted the request for health insurance to reflect the work that's underway on that, and I won't get too far into it because some of it is still a subject of discussions, but we have made that adjustment. And that adjustment along with some additional one-time resources that we identified led us to the numbers that you see here. I'll note that the school's level service budget gap at $454,000 is based on level services. They are requesting a modified level services budget, which does increase that, that gap. But we've reflected here what the level services at this point.
Steel.
Yes, I just want to get clarification. You said, the school, modified level services? I'm not sure with that.
My understanding of their request is that they, they have a long-term strategic plan that they have been seeking funding for over the past few years. They've modified that long-term strategic plan to a number that's less than it would otherwise have been for a request, but it is, it is beyond level services. That's my understanding at least. I don't want to speak for the superintendent of the school committee, but I think that that's the best way to describe that. And I'm saying that because you may hear a number that's different than that discussed.
Right, I guess that's, that's right, and the word modified kind of throws it.
What may have been presented at the school budget hearing is different than this.
The budget hearing's the 10th, right?
It would have been a workshop.
It would have been a workshop.
Workshop, okay.
It would have been a workshop.
So, but they have, they have a hearing scheduled for the 10th.
Yes, a hearing, next Monday night.
Mrs. Minipelli.
Just, just really fast. So our $91,000 is basically because of the increased health insurance expense, or?
No.
No, our $91,000 could be towards contract settlements. We also are carrying money in our salary pool for contract settlements, for contracts that expired June 30, 2015, that are still not settled.
Right.
So I would say the majority of ours is due to contractual obligations.
Well, there is also, I mean, obviously fixed costs have risen.
Yeah, right, right.
Beyond the level of 2.5%,
Right.
which reduces the amount of available revenue to be split between general government and the school department, which is exacerbated by the fact that we have contractual obligations to meet if we want to maintain the level of services and personnel.
Now, that was my next question on school, the school side of it, where their gap is, I think, much more broad, I guess, than ours. Do, is that due to them adding any additional positions that aren't there right now? And how much of that 454 is the addition of new, you know, new positions to their budget?
I don't know that we have that breakdown, but in order for the school to achieve their level service budget, there, there are some additional FTEs included. But of the 454, I'm not sure what, what those positions make up.
But that 454 would be the salary, insurance benefits, employee benefits for those?
It would just be strictly salary. All employee benefits are in this fixed cost total that we, we carry the school's health insurance, you know, Medicare, life insurance. That's all in the fixed cost. That all comes off the top.
And that's based upon their level services budget as presented. So those fixed costs for those positions are in the fixed cost total up above.
Well, I'm just, because I wanna, I wanna understand this, so. And I'm sorry if I'm asking a lot of questions, but I know that you put this together because we asked you to, so that's why I wanna, I wanna ask you. So you did explain that the last time you did this presentation to us, but in terms of their level services budget, it has the addition of new employee, which bumps up the fixed cost total. So you've already attributed that bump?
Yes.
That increase from the 20.3 to the 20.9 because of the addition of those?
That would be correct.
Because it's not an addition on town side, it's addition on school side, right?
Correct.
So that difference isn't just what current employees, it's the addition of new employees. It's gonna bump all of these figures up, right?
Yes, the fixed cost total, I believe, includes three new FTEs.
Which is school addition?
Yes, that's correct.
If I may ask, then, and maybe this isn't, I shouldn't be asking you, I should be asking the school this question. With the level services, if they're adding new employees, how is that level services? Isn't that supposed to be with what you have?
Mr. Gilberto.
Again, I don't want to speak for the superintendent of schools, whose recommendation this is at this point. It's not an approved budget, but it's a recommended budget.
I understand.
My understanding is that in order to continue to deliver the services at the level they're being delivered at now, there's a, a need for additional staff. That's my understanding.
So it's, so if the current services that they have FY '17, to maintain those level services, they have to hire three more FTEs to do what they're doing now. Is that my?
If I understand the representations correctly, yes. That because of changes in enrollment or the services that need to be provided to a particular cohort of students, that there's an additional need for staffing, as I understand it. And again, this is not an approved budget.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to understand it.
Sure.
When we, when, I think when people hear level services, they're assuming it's, and this is what you have, and you're keeping it the same way this year, but in reality, there's, there's new, an estimated three new FTEs. That doesn't sound level, you know, you know. From a layman's, I'm not a finance guy, so I'm not, you know, trying, and I'm not trying to be critical at all either. I'm just trying to, to better, better understand. So the other, the other question I had is, the, and I'm not involved in the, the healthcare discussions, but is that, is whatever is in the making in there? Or is that something that will?
It, it is.
If it happens, right?
Yeah, we've taken some, you know, some steps with regard to reflect this, and I don't think I'm saying anything that we haven't said to employees in, in our discussions, but we believe we have advantageous news with regard to the renewal going into fiscal year 2018 with regard to the carrier. And that information is accounted for.
Okay.
Here. There may be additional opportunity that is not reflected here, but the discussion we've had is we don't believe that it would be prudent to further reduce the health insurance budget at this point in time until we have some experience under our belt. But I'd rather not say much more than that right now.
Right, and that, you know, as I said, that, there's a fine line there. I'm just trying to.
To answer your question though, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the extent that we believe we're going to be making adjustments related to health insurance budget, we've made those adjustments.
Right. Yeah, we don't anticipate any reduction, and even at the finance level, we're comfortable with the number that's in there now. We don't anticipate any further reduction.
Right.
So it's already reflected.
And I just, I would, I just had two, two more questions. So with the, they, the school must have had a pretty significant increase in enrollment to add those extra positions in.
I, I don't know that the overall enrollment is the driver versus allocation of resources within the enrollment.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, it's not, rather, they could have bubbles in, in certain grade levels, which requires shifting of staff or additional staffing requirements in, at certain grade, grade levels, or in certain programming, such as special needs, depending upon who moves into town, whether they need some additional paraprofessionals to assist those students. And based upon their enrollment in those types of programs, as well as, as the student body moves through the grade levels. It doesn't necessarily mean a reduction at one level, say at the elementary school, as the bubbles go through the middle of the high school. There's not a corresponding decrease, where you may need an increase at some staffing levels just based on enrollment at certain grade levels.
And then my last question, and I think you explained this before, but your calculation of decrease in new growth is based on just kind of a historical review of that?
Sure, so for FY '17, we had a reval year, so everything was reevaluated. And, you know, we had originally budgeted $500,000 thinking that, for FY '17, thinking that that would be a conservative figure for a reval year. However, we came in a little shy, a little shy of that. So based on the assessors' assumptions, at this point in time, that's, that is the conservative figure for new growth. Based on permits, you know, there's not a lot of, maybe complete new construction jobs. There's more renovations and additions, so.
Mr. Frisco.
Thank you.
Do you have a next level down breakout of the fixed costs? We talked a little bit about where, what's school, what's town government?
I could get that for you.
I don't need it tonight, but I would like to see that.
Absolutely.
And if it's possible to get it, what it looked like in FY '16, FY '17?
Yes.
Just those two years?
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm just curious what that 20, out of that $20 million number, how much of that is out of town government responsibility?
Yeah.
For us, the school? And then, you know, what it was for the schools in '16 and '17?
I can go back, probably, I probably can go back to even FY '13 and, you know, do a breakdown.
Trend that we have to start looking at.
I think when, when it comes to some of the fixed costs, particularly employee benefits, it's pretty much the same. It's like 66, 34, anyway.
It can't be.
Yeah, it is.
It can't be because they're retiring on the school side far faster than we are on the town government's side.
Not necessarily proportionately, but maybe a little higher levels. But that's how we're budgeting anyway. So, but it'd be an interesting exercise, but I think when we, if I look at it, it's gonna be pretty close.
I hope it is. I have funny suspicions it's not gonna be, but I'd like to be proven wrong.
But anyway, there's a financial planning team meeting tomorrow morning, where we will continue to work through this and look at other ways to somehow or another close the gap, mechanisms to finance things so that we can at least try and maintain the level of services that we currently enjoy.
Mr. Chairman, through you, we have one more slide which just shows the proposed use right now of free cash, the balance of free cash at the June town meeting. You see that there's a series of warrant articles that we've allocated portions of the free cash to. The bathroom facility at Arthur Kenny Field, the master plan to the CPC, which we may be able to defray partially depending upon whether or not we get a grant from the state. The town hall fire station feasibility study, which may or may not get more discussion amongst the board. Our obligations under the capital plan, the use of debt capital stabilization funds. And then we're carrying right now $150,000 for the use of snow and ice, a free cash for snow and ice for an overage. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we were basically right at the number. I'm sure we are in excess of that number, so we're eating into the $500,000 in free cash that we allocate each year. This shows $150,000, whether it's that number, potentially a larger number. We just, we won't know until later in the season. We just had a storm. Fortunately, we didn't have to call in any contractors to do plowing. We used our own staff. But it was a long-duration event that began Friday and didn't end until, I think it was nine o'clock on Saturday evening in terms of our resources. So that's an assumption of $150,000. We're not saying that that's what it will be. Could be larger, could be smaller. If it were $150,000, that would leave a free cash available in the amount of $236,000. If we were to expend the entire $500,000, as you can see, we would have a, a negative free cash number we need to reduce from within these warrant articles. So pray for no more snow.
Jeff, you're pondering.
Yeah, I am. I'm, I'm looking at the $400,000 for the bathroom facility, and a lot of discussions, the number was $450,000. So what happened to the $50,000?
We used it at a town meeting.
You voted.
We voted at a town meeting to move forward with the plans, the design plans.
Is this, this number here?
But I thought that was gonna come out of the 652.
No, it was coming, right, but part of the 652, $450,000 was allocated to go towards that cost.
We're only gonna bond 200 to.
So now we've expended $50,000 of the 450 in free cash that was available. To your mark on that project.
So prior, prior to March 13th town meeting, we had $1,671. So that's why I put the balance of free cash as of today at $1,621, because that $50,000 has already been appropriated. So that's why the bathroom facility was reduced to $400,000 versus the 450. The 450 becomes part of the total project cost, but we've already appropriated.
Right, okay. Thanks for reading my mind, by the way.
So any other questions as to where we currently sit? And again, it continues to be a work in progress. And I have to say, you know, Town Administrator Liz, Superintendent Business Manager, School Committee, board members here are working very hard to come up with some sort of a game plan to close the gap and propose something to the entire board to come up with a balanced budget.
Be nice. Is that in, by the way, I didn't notice.
Yeah.
Yes. And the revenue and expense sheet, which has the detail, is also in the, in the meeting packet and in the FY '18 folder. As are the materials, as are the materials from the March 23rd school committee budget workshop. The board member should find that information in there as well.
Okay, well said.
Okay.
Minutes.
Move along.
February 25th, 2017 budget meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February 25th, 2017 budget hearing minutes as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Just the, I will be abstaining because I was not present at that Saturday meeting. On the motion before us, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, one abstention. So three. This is, this is the February 25th budget meeting. Mr. Uh, Mr. Yule? Okay, and then three, oh, and one.
Three, oh, one, and I have noted that the bottom is serious, not yet.
And it's March 20th, we want to hold it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, March 9th, 9th, regular executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 9th, 2017 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstain, because I was abstained.
Three in favor, one abstention, Mrs. Minipelli. All right, March 9th, executive session.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 9th, 2017 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, seconded by Mrs. Minipelli. Mrs. Minipelli, I assume you're gonna be abstaining from that one, too?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, abstentions, Mrs. Minipelli. March 20th, we're gonna ask to hold. But noted that there's something that needs to be addressed going forward, so we'll have that at our next meeting.
For the regular, executive sessions, okay.
But for the.
Just for the regular.
Just for the regular, regular, for the regular set. Executive session is okay.
So, okay. So I should.
Go for it.
Make the motion for executive session.
Executive session. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 20th, 2017 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Only made and seconded by Mrs. Minipelli. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Can I abstain?
You abstain.
One abstention. Legal bills for February. Okay, legal bills for February.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the legal bills for February two thousand seventeen in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and fif- seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents as follows. Copelman and Page, PC General, four thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. Copeman and Page, Copelman and Page, PC Labor, one thousand six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Copelman and Page, PC JT Berry, three thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Copelman and Page, PC Nine Mill Street, fifty-five dollars and fifty cents. And Thompson West Publishing, six hundred and twenty-four dollars, for a total of nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second.
Motion duly made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make a note through you that, um, our legal services budget is growing tight, if you looked at the spreadsheets. Some of those costs, again, we believe we're gonna be able to book off to the existing JT Berry appropriation, but it's something that we're gonna monitor closely as we go to close out, close out the, the rest of the year with four months to go.
No more questions.
And a town meeting upcoming.
No more legal questions.
No more questions, yes.
We have to know the answers. Well, we have our lawyer right here, so.
Review draft, June town meeting warrant articles, oh, excuse me, before that, yeah, that's the one.
Mr. Chairman, through you, there is a draft of the warrant that is in the, um, in the packet. There are a few articles for which we don't have any language, most notably the last couple of articles pertaining to general bylaw changes, um, one of which relates to drones, the other which relates to the sidewalk snore removal bylaw. I referenced, uh, in the discussion, uh, the last meeting, uh, what the attention was of the administration, uh, with regard to those articles. We, um, continue to review this draft and we'll continue to, to adjust it appropriately. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board members might have.
Mr. Yule?
Yes, thank you. Um, with regard to the drones, uh, I did, uh, I had expressed at one of our earlier meetings I had, uh, an interest in, um, uh, participating in the discussion on the drones, uh, simply because with the advent of, of, of deliveries beginning to, uh, possibly proliferate in towns, and more specifically our town, that we probably need to put some time into, uh, putting a bylaw together, probably working more with, collectively with the CPC on this, on, uh, drones being used within the town, uh, for the sole purposes of, uh, delivering, uh, I shouldn't say sole purposes, for, for the concern of, of the drones constantly going over people's property, uh, at low levels, that would interfere with their privacy, uh, I would be concerned about accidents happen, happening and so on, so I, I'm not sure, and I need to, you know, I would like to talk further with the police chief on this, 'cause I'm not sure how we can control the advent of drones, uh, being over the skies of North Reading and over the property lines of people, over people's properties. Uh, you know, I'm from the transportation business, so when you make a delivery, you go up the road, you make a left, go to the other corner, you make a right, and then you stop and you deliver. You're, you're on the, you're on the roads. But with, in the advent of drones now, um, uh, they will be able to, they have the ability to fly right over people's properties, and they can be doing that at a low level. The big concern is if, if, if it's a package delivery, maybe that's not an issue for some people, but you can't distinguish between that and whether it's a peeping tom or something, 'cause you, you can't tell. So, um, I wanted to participate in that, that conversation, and, you know, I don't know how we go forward, you know, as far as the, as a warrant article is concerned. I know the chief has something more limited in mind, but, uh, you know, it's, I just...
Mrs. Mani Pelli?
I have a limited knowledge of this area because I have a family of drone fanatics and tech, techie wizards in my house, but I do think that this is a...
You including yourself in that category?
I don't ever get the chance to operate them, but it would be fun if I could. But anyway, I do believe this is an area that is heavily regulated, particularly for deliveries, and, um, and I believe, I believe there's a pilot's license requirement for commercial use.
That I'm not sure about. I know there's a registration with the FAA that is required.
Yes, right. But the peeping tom thing, I mean, if you actually see a drone in, in action, it's very similar to, you know, video, video, or the Google vehicle going around taking a streetscape, it's, you can't peer into people's windows or things like that, but what's open that anyone can see is obviously visible with a drone.
Right.
You know, with the drone, but, um, but I, I think there's, it's already, if it isn't the subject of regulation, it's going to be, but I think there are some regulations for commercial delivery type of thing. I don't even think that's allowed yet, but, but, um, I'm sure that, I'm sure that we would need to, if we're drawing up a bylaw on that, we would need to sort of mirror, we wouldn't be able to do something differently than what's already in place, regulated already.
Well, I, I guess, uh, part of what, uh, the genesis for me and the thought process is that the, um, uh, CPC was very proactive in, uh, addressing wind turbines in the town. So they were very, very involved in that, and they passed, we have a, we now have a, I believe we now have a bylaw, uh, in place with regard to wind turbines in the town. They can be a certain height, you know, and so on. So they were very proactive on that, and I guess that's, um, where the genesis of my thought process, is if they can do that, then maybe there's something we could do about, about drones. It, it's a big concern, is it?
I think you could certainly regulate it, but are you gonna regulate remote-controlled airplanes and, you know, remote-controlled helicopters and, you know, all the other gadgets that people fly and things like that?
But maybe I'm thinking bigger than that, in, in the sense that, um, that, I'm, I'm not thinking of a little, somebody at the moment, I'm not, I think the police chief is addressing this issue, someone having a drone and flying it over somebody's house. Okay, I think the police chief's version is, is addressing it.
That, that's my understanding of his primary concern.
Right, so he, he's concerned about the neighbor or...
No, invasion of privacy, that type of thing.
Right, right.
And the inability to enforce.
Right, and then I'm, I'm looking bigger in this.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm kinda looking a little bit bigger than that, and I, I realize the state, the state laws, it's not just commercial, I mean, there's somebody, you know, somebody could be on the other side of town and doing something like this, so, um, uh, I'm, I'm thinking that, um, uh, the, the, the use of these, you know, I mean, can't, I'm sorry, there'll be, there probably are going to be state laws and federal laws and so on that come into play. I understand that, you know, I understand that, but, but then sometimes it comes down to us and, and, and I don't know if there's gonna be a height restriction on these things.
Yeah, I think there is for the, for the commercial use of them, just like they require a license, pilot's license, I think there is.
I haven't heard that, but, yeah.
Because of, you know, airspace and everything else like that.
Right.
But I think we could, we should, you're talking about something different to what's already in place for regulating, regulating it, right? 'Cause I think...
Yeah, I mean, either complimenting it or, or what have you. Uh, it's just a big concern that I have. I know, you can't imagine how bad this can be until it gets bad, I guess, you know, and it can get bad with, with drones. And if there's a way for a town like North Reading to control, hopefully control, the proliferation of, of drones going over people's property, that's, that's the aspect that I'm more concerned about, that they, it's their routes and how, and, and they're going over people's property and they're not high enough, and they hover around, or they crash on the people's property. These are the things that I'm concerned about, and I don't know if there are any steps we can take, but, but it's, uh, um, it's a concern that I have, so that's why I wanted...
I think, you know, to, to me, I think the, the privacy issue is, is of paramount importance. I think we probably would have most control over initially, you know, and whether or not statewide, uh, there's some legislation pending or there are committee looking into it, I think we should contact, you know, Representative Jones and Senator Tar to see, 'cause this isn't just North Reading, this is everywhere. And we know that, uh, you know, congressionally, they're gonna be starting to look at this stuff too. The FAA, FAA's already introduced some sort of, uh, legislative, regulations, but, uh, you know, I think, I, I don't wanna expend too much of our resources yet in areas which will probably be overturned or superseded by, by federal and state regulations, so, um, you know, I think we should, if you have some comments or concerns, uh, to me, I think we need to take it up with, you know, our state and congressional delegation rather than, uh, our police chief, you know, to me the things...
Sift our way through it.
And to me, I think we could, you know, control what we can control right now, uh, take some first steps to ensure some privacy, uh, from regular citizenry out there who are not necessarily having to be, or even if they are registered, uh, with the FAA, FAA, but controlling their behavior, you know, in their neighborhoods, say. Mr. Frisco?
Massachusetts did take the FAA law and it's executed now, it's in place, and it, there's like four little stupid things that they require, like don't, can't fly any further than four hundred feet, can't fly near an airport, and it's like another one, it's like, don't do stupid things. No, it literally says that, and there's one other one. No, that's what, I mean, so, this peeping tom thing you referenced, that's a stupid thing, you can't do it.
Right.
And that law, I think they kept it pretty general to cover it, so it's already in place. Uh, I'm not sure, I don't even think we have to do anything. I think the chief already has the authority that if, you know, somebody does something stupid, he has the authority to report them to the FAA.
But again, it can be more restrictive in, in relation to, you know, privacy.
Seventeen years old. Yep, seventeen years old, are older to fly them.
Oh, okay.
I knew there was four things.
So I, I don't know that, I don't know that I'm in favor of spending an awful lot of time and energy.
Yeah.
Resources, uh, broad brushing things, the bigger issue yet.
I understand, I, I think that, to me, the dialogue is important more than, more than anything else.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you insofar as that goes, I think, but I think it comes to a higher authority. Mr. Gilbert, I'm sorry.
Certainly. Um, so just with regard to this, as, again, I mentioned in the first discussion, this came up as a result of the movie, and so complaints that were received, and we had some voluntary compliance took care of the issue. The chief was concerned that there may be a day that comes that he gets a complaint and the person's not so willing to voluntarily comply. In the interim period, there has been some update to the federal regulations. Um, we're not sure that that's necessarily sufficient to address the concern or not, so that's an exercise that's underway with regard to this at this point. You know, I'm not saying that there won't be a need for something, but it is a possibility as we continue to do research this. There isn't a lot out there in terms of municipalities addressing this issue, but it's something that, um, we were exposed to because of the movie production being here, and it's something that the chief felt we ought to respond to. So we'll continue to, to update the board. Through you, Mr. Chairman, selectmen, are you asking to participate in the planning discussions with regard to this?
Yeah, I, I would just, would like to, if it's, uh, okay with the board, do that?
I think we all have the opportunity to weigh in at some point, you know, I don't know.
I just don't want us to run around with a big, make this do a big project.
Massachusetts law is already in place. I just think there needs to be consensus from the board right now whether or not, how deeply we want the administration to get into it. I personally think it should just be cursory at this point and address the issues that the chief has, has pointed out, uh, rather than delving into the whole issue.
I think one effort should take place, and that is awareness. We should definitely make a little extra effort to create either on our website or the chief's website, awareness, so people go in, if they're interested in flying these things, they can click on that Mass- Massachusetts law, so they can see it and read it, it's very simple, it's one page, and, and then a phone number at his department, where they, somebody in town can contact them for further information. But I think awareness is probably the effort that I'd like to see, other than that. I think we're good.
And just for, these have to be registered anyway? I, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine, you're good.
These have to be registered anyway, and if someone is actually engaging in that behavior and they do actually look into it, the footage, it can't be all, it's, it's captured, so they can see what they're doing with it, so it would really be idiotic for someone to use it in that manner, but also in a movie production, it's a commercial project that would require one of the pilots license it under the regs.
This, this was incidental, it wasn't part of the production, it was somebody who was curious.
Yeah.
Curious about the production.
Yeah, it was just a, a, a resident in town was having their drone watch the, the production, so they, they weren't employed by the production.
And that was a problem for the movie production?
Yeah.
There were some concerns that were expressed, I don't know if it was limited to the movie production, but again, I wanna stress, it was voluntary compliance with the individual said, but not looking to cause a problem. I think the chief's...
I thought you were telling someone, put your, put your, put your phone away, don't take video when you're out in public. It's how quick, how far are we going to regulate things that are open to the public inspection anyway? You know, don't fly your drone here, there, and everywhere, I mean, how far are we gonna regulate this?
Right, well, I, I think in that case...
And how are we gonna enforce it?
That could interfere with what, if, if it was interfering with what they were doing, I think that was, it's one thing to stand here and take a picture.
Anyway, just to move the conversation along a little bit, I think, uh, I don't think there's a consensus of the board to dive into this too deeply. I mean, if you have some thoughts and, um, as to what the general bylaw should include, I would say forward that to the administrator and the, uh, and the police chief and inform them as to why you're thinking, how it would fit, um, but I'm not ready to dive into it. Personally, I'm not ready to dive into it yet.
Well, I, I guess I haven't seen what's being drawn up to have a question or suggestion to add or subtract, you know, yeah, I mean, it's, and I'm not looking to, um, impose a, a thought process, it's just, it's more of a dialogue thing, so I can sit there and I can learn, I can say, oh, yeah, yeah, 'cause I, I made complete confidence and faith on, in the chief, that's not, that's not the question.
You can just forward to us what, what...
Yeah.
How about the chief will, I'm afraid, will be forwarding what the general outline of the proposal would entail, and then we can opine individually even, uh, as to whether or not we think it should be expanded or contracted.
Will this be in time for the, to, to be a...
It's a warrant, uh...
It's, it's blank, though, but will this be in time for that meeting?
The April twenty-fourth meeting, yes. Our intention is to have something in the packet.
To be able to sign on, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
As soon as it's available, we'll provide it.
Okay. Was that, I'm sorry, was that the only other one that wasn't, was blank, though?
The sidewalk snore removal, uh, one was also one that I, I referenced as well, which I reported at the last meeting, that we had concerns with regard to, uh, compliance. Um, as a result of the discussion, I have, um, contacted the chamber to arrange time to discuss further what some of the obstacles might be with regard to compliance, but, uh, it, it was our intention to look at establishing a procedure that didn't require multiple visits by police officers to establishments when there's non-compliant, compliance, because we're finding that in the past couple of years, where we made some adjustments, and we did see some improvement in compliance, um, it wasn't to the extent that I think we wanted to see it. And one of the obstacles we've identified is that the process requires that there be a verbal warning and then follow-up inspection, and it's a tremendous amount of resource that's being required for a long stretch of road versus, you know, a commitment that we've already made to public education as to what the property owner or business is required to do, and then when the season begins, if they don't do it within a timely fashion, to address it with our own resources and to recover the costs. I mean, that's really what I heard from the board the last time we discussed this. I think what we're finding is the process that's required in the bylaw is inhibiting that, is inhibiting that, and we wanna improve it.
Correct.
And again, not looking to be punitive, we're really just concerned about getting the sidewalk cleared from the snow without taxing our police resources to do so.
Okay, I, I think if, if the bylaw is amended to the area in which we're talking about, I think a couple of storms, there'll be an awful lot more compliance on a timely basis, but, Mr. Yule?
Yeah, well, I mean, unfortunately, uh, there's kind of a good news, bad news scenario this winter, 'cause again, there were still people that did clear the sidewalks, but there were too many that did not, and...
Probably the same characters.
Probably, and... Probably, and it was, it's dangerous out there, okay, for pedestrians. And there are pedestrians that you do, you can see the footprints and so on, the people who walk and have to go over that snow. As I mentioned before, when I went out to do a walk and I had my, I had no choice but to have my back from traffic because I was on a sidewalk where there was, it was snow, it was plowed, but then it stopped and then I had to go out in the street. So it was very dangerous. But I hope that, and this is what I would be looking for, and you can convey this message to the chief and what he's working on. I just simply think that if a police officer is driving down there and he sees that that sidewalk has not been cleared of snow within 24 hours, he's going to ticket that person, okay? It's the same thing if they see somebody speeding, they ticket them. So you see, you see a crime being made, occurring, which is not clearing sidewalk of snow or of any kind of debris for that matter, okay? Takes nothing, in my estimation, for a police officer to pull over, write out a ticket, say, here, you didn't clean the sidewalk. I'm hoping that that's the direction that the police chief is going. I know the problem that we have right now is you got to give a warning, there's going to be two weeks.
Yeah, so I think we're going to see some recommendations and modifications to it that we'll probably embrace readily.
Just to respond to that, I mean, as I referenced in the last meeting, what, again, and this is not something, unlike the drone scenario, it's not, this one is more of a collaborative effort involving the Public Works Department, myself, and the Police Department. What we envision is something that has a short, has a reasonable window, but not one that's so prolonged that we have a period of time after snowfall has ended that people are then out walking and not able to do so. So probably 24 hours, giving people 24 hours after the snow's ended. And imposing a fine of some significant amount as well as the ability of the town to go and clear the snow and recover the cost of clearing the snow. Something combined in that fashion. That's what I envision. Again, may not be that final product, but that's what I envision.
Mr. Frisco?
This thing, this gets under my craw because you guys are trying to do something that you're going to put people at risk. And I don't know why you keep having the same conversation every year. It's un-executable on Route 28. When homeowners on Route 28 are not required to shovel their sidewalks, you're going to force a business to shovel the sidewalk up to the homeowner's location and it's not going to be shoveled and you're going to put these people out in the street. So the best way to solve this, let's just get over with. The town needs to plow the sidewalks. It's the only way, if you really want this to be safe, you're going to get away with it. If you're going to try to execute this plan, you're going to force the chief to go give tickets to the ram, business owners, is stupid. We're going to push people into the street because you're not going to give a ticket to the homeowner that lives right next door to a business. And you're going to put these people at risk, Jeff. So if you really want to do this, then let's put it in the budget and can we move on? Send the sidewalk plowed down one side, turn around, go back down the other, and move on.
I don't object to that, by the way. I mean, I don't think that's a bad idea, but we've not, we've not done that.
That, you're better off spending time figuring out how you pay for that than us trying to have the chief go out and spend money on an $80 an hour officer to go write tickets. It's crazy.
Mrs. Beni Belli.
I don't think you, I don't think it necessarily needs to be, because if it's the same offenders and we're using our resources to clear it anyway, it should just read, you have, you have 24 hours after the storm ends to clear it. Otherwise, you're going to get fined $200 a day till it's done. And if we do it, we're going to add into that the cost of our removal and it's going to be a lien on the property. Yeah, I'm talking about something, a little bit from what I'm hearing, something different. But we should write it that way and that, my understanding was it was directed towards the businesses clearing off the road so people could walk down. It wasn't homeowners that we had the issue with, it was businesses who weren't, who weren't doing it.
But you're forcing the businesses to plow up to those homeowners who are not plowing those sidewalks and you're forcing people to walk out on the Route 28. That's what you're doing.
But if the town's going to be doing it anyway.
Different story.
No, if the town's going to be doing it after the 24-hour period, they're going to be taking care of those residential property portions of the sidewalk anyway. Theoretically.
Theoretically. But the problem is now you're going to send a police officer out there to execute this, to do tickets. How about we just set all that aside and just when it snows, within 24 hours, the town administrator has the DPW director send the sidewalk plowed down one side and down the other? And that's it, figure out how we pay for it. That's what we should be spending our time on. This problem gets resolved. Because what you guys are trying to do here is you're going to put people at risk.
But can I say, that's for another day. Decide whether or not we want to support the article as once it's put together.
Okay.
And you could always, you could always have it revised for the emergency, DPW emergency personnel to be, because they're the ones that are going to know what the cost is to remove it, adding that to a violation and citing the, you could, you don't have to put it on the burden on the police to do the ticket writing either. You could write it so that you give that ability to the, you know, personnel or supervisor, you know, who's supervising the removal operations too, you know? Give them the authority and the ordinance to cite someone for a violation. Because they're the ones that are going to know what it costs.
That is, I mean, that certainly is an option. I would say that, you know, I foresee that if this were implemented in the way we identified it and the way I have been thinking about, the recommendation would be, based on my conversation with the chief, I envisioned that there would be a police officer there present because I expect that there will be properties where there's a significant amount of pushback when the equipment shows up. And to the point that was brought up earlier, you know, with regard to it, there are other communities that do sidewalks, snow removal. We, you know, we do it in a number of different areas, mostly tied to property that we own and mostly tied to walking routes to the public schools. You know, this area, for whatever reason, the townspeople approved the bylaw going back a number of years that put the responsibility on the non-residential property owners. And we're trying to figure out how to make it work without wasting the town's resources and really ultimately addressing the issue, which is getting the snow off the sidewalk. Because all the fine in the world doesn't get the snow cleared, as we know.
Right. You can fine all day long, but it doesn't achieve the goal you're trying to say.
And that's been the concern.
What I'm saying, adjusting is-
Works in Chelsea.
We can, we can achieve the goal in what we should be spending this time, that we keep talking about this bylaw on, is how we pay for it. That's what we should be spending our time.
I mean, you can't fine all day long either, every day that a violation occurs is a separate fine.
Right.
You can only fine once a day.
Money talks, nobody walks.
Any other articles that are of interest or concern at this point?
Drones and snow.
Drones and snow.
Drones and snow. All right, so.
Yes, to your question. I did want to add, a request of the board to add a warrant article for the, for having town meeting on Saturdays. I would like to have a placeholder for that. And we talked about it and I had requested that we have the special town meeting on a Saturday and everyone said, well, that's a better conversation for the regular town meetings and that we can discuss that in the future. And this is the future and I'd like for us to have a placeholder for having town meetings on, for the regular town meeting, June, June and October on Saturdays. I've had many conversations with seniors around town who said to me that they were more apt to come, and some said they would come if it was on, during daylight hours, that they could come to a meeting, town meeting. But they just can't attend at night because they can't drive. And, you know, the issue with June is summer. Is that quite still spring when the meeting occurs? But, so it's light when you come, go in, but it's dark when you come out. And that's an issue, you know, for them. So I would like for us to have a placeholder for that.
Well, if there's a consensus of the board to put that forth for the town meeting's consideration, the board can always include a warrant article. If it isn't the consensus of the board to be supportive of an article like that for consideration at this particular time, wouldn't necessarily. So I'll put it to the members of the board as to whether or not there's an appetite or a consensus to include a warrant article to pose the question to town meeting to see if they wish to change the date, the day of the week the town meeting would occur. I'll leave it open. We know where you stand, Jeff.
Yeah.
Michael?
Mr. Chair. When we did the special town meeting, I did put a little social media survey out there and the feedback I received was really in favor of keeping it on a Monday evening. They, a lot of people kept talking about going back to the fact that they work all weekend and when the weekend comes, they got the sports with the children, they got events with their children and the time with their families and they'd much rather come home from work and give up that one evening on a Monday night. But I agree, there is an impact on the seniors. I've heard from them as well. But the majority of the people that are going to come, that I heard from, said they'd like to keep it on a Monday night. I didn't really hear from any seniors. I did ask Mrs. Perini to get feedback from her folks that visit and she said she would do that for me and I haven't had a chance to follow up with her to see if she's learned anything. I did send her an email asking her for, for that data. So that's all I'll share with you.
Kate, really?
I would tend to agree with Mr. Frisco that, I know this was a concern, but I'm wondering if there was, is another way that we could maybe transport to and from people that really wanted to go that were just simply unable to drive there? Is there a way for us to make that happen? Because I agree, I don't think any, if we have it on a Saturday, no one's going to show up. We already have limited attendance as it is on the, on the weeknight. But I'm not, I'm not sure if that would increase the attendance or not. And we have all these other people to think about that are there, you know, having people come in, you know, checking people in and that, those people too. I wonder what they want, whether they would be rather have it on a Saturday than on a Monday.
We certainly would incur more costs as far as staffing in overtime on Saturday. It's probably about the same, probably because we're doing 24 hours anyway. I mean, I've heard the discussion over the years, it was moderated in 1973 and periodically it comes up as to whether or not, you know, it would enhance attendance and whether or not, you know, it would be more open to more people. Again, the consensus that I've found over the years, and again, as I age, anybody that has school-aged kids or involved in any type of activities, count them out. You get a few of them now, you get some of them now. As far as the seniors, yes, it's a concern and I think Kate has a good point. You know, maybe what we should be talking about is providing some sort of transportation for those that feel so they can't safely, you know, come and go to town meeting. We have the senior van, maybe we just put on additional staff person to transport some people to our meeting nights if they really truly want to participate.
That would be a good discussion.
You know, I think that, that might warrant some discussion if we're looking to address that segment of the community that has concerns. Let's make it easier for them to get there.
And timing's actually pretty good to do it. We're still talking about the budget, so.
Yeah. But I haven't found over the years a tremendous appetite to switch. And I've had a lot of discussion with a lot of people over the years, not a lot lately. Again, people's minds change and demographics change, but I think the demographics of the community now are younger than they were. Well, we have a more of an aging population, the school-aged population and the kids involved in their activities, it's a little bit higher now than when my kids were even there 10 years ago. So I'm not opposed to asking town meeting their opinion. You know, again, maybe we could do that in the form of resolution or something at the meeting. The consensus to see, we should be offering something in October. But I, for one, right now, would not be supportive of changing the town meeting to a Saturday. Me personally. But that doesn't preclude me from supporting, putting an article on, you know, if somehow or another I felt there was a groundswell of support and crying or outcry, demanding an opportunity to speak about it. But I just haven't heard that personally.
Just one quick thing too, that I think, I don't, I see this because I have school-aged kids, but there's an awful lot of people in the town that, like us, are volunteering their time and they're working their weekend schedule around, you know, let's say, an evening soccer game that they're coaching or, you know, weekend practice that they, so it's not just the people that are, have the kids participating, it's the people that are, massive amounts of people that are volunteering their time to coach or train or teach or do these other things that are, they're relegated to doing that on the weekend because they're working during the week. So I think we'd be probably eliminating a whole segment of those people from coming, who I, who were at the meeting, this last meeting, because the issues were important to them, you know?
To that point, when my kids were younger, again, I coached soccer, basketball, baseball, all three seasons, both boys simultaneously, and then still did this sort of stuff and the weekends were for those types of events and family time. So I can appreciate your thought process. I just haven't heard crying need from a lot of people in a long time, personally. Yes, Steve?
Okay. First of all, to me, it is a matter of fairness. And I use the term fairness simply because at night, if you have the meetings at night, seniors don't have a choice to do their duty for the town because they cannot drive at night. So they are discriminated against because it is at night. If it's during the daytime, and we know people can't go, you can't make it during the daytime during a week because people work, we understand that, all right? But if you make it during the daytime on a Saturday, all right, that gives everybody, everybody, whether they're seniors, parents with kids or what have you, to make a decision to go or not to go. And it's a fair option that everybody has, all right? You know, parents, if they choose to go to the soccer game, I understand that. My kids play soccer, you know, I've gone through the same thing, all right? If that's the case, you know, that's a decision that they can make. But seniors can't make that decision at night. They're not given that option. And that's my primary, that's reason number one for me to do that. It's a matter of fairness, you know, with seniors. The other thing is about busing seniors in and so on, there's a cost to that, we know that. That's to the budget, all right? But seniors are early to bed, early to rise people. So if these meetings go to 11 o'clock at night, we might have to wake them up, myself included, to, you know, because these meetings can be dry, these town meetings, so. But they're early to bed individuals, so it's very difficult for them to put them in that imposition of have to go, have to go home late at night and so on and wait for a bus that can only hold so many people and therefore make it, it's more arduous for them to attend town meeting. That's why at night, it's not a good idea, all right? Again, having it during the daytime just simply allows, you know, everybody an opportunity now. I know Mike, you did a little bit of a survey and it's an online survey. Most of the people I'm talking about don't have that luxury of going online to do a survey.
I don't know, you know, I've been doing a lot of taxes over the last few weeks and a lot of seniors who are 65 and, I mean, I have a woman in there that's 84 years old today who's, did you have an email editor? Here's my email, I'm on Facebook. More and more people are communicating with their children and grandchildren. More and more people are communicating with their children and grandchildren, and I agree, there are an awful lot who are not, but there are a lot more than you think that are actually utilizing, which is a wonderful thing.
I know, I have a lot of them on my social media.
So it's, that are participating.
And as far as, as whether the numbers will increase or not on a, on a Saturday, you know, I don't know the answer to that because you can bring a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, so. I, I would say that you have a better chance of an increased population of participation at the meetings with seniors than you would have now. I would say that that number would increase, right? And regular town meeting, you don't need a, a, a limited, you don't need a quorum, okay? So, so that's not an issue.
My guess is, you're talking about, you know, a 10 o'clock start, you've got to do four hours probably, like we normally do, you're talking 10 to 2 right in the middle of a Saturday, I think you're going to have an awful lot of people who are reluctant to make the commitment on a regular basis, but I don't know. But again, I haven't heard the outcry. I, again, while I'm sympathetic, and I think your, your thought process is clear and makes a very good points, I'm not necessarily looking to change the structure and pattern yet.
They do another town as well.
Maybe this discussion will stimulate some more, and I'll get some, I'll get some more feedback. Mrs. Mani Pelli?
And I just want to go on the record and say that we're not discriminating against seniors or elderly people, and I don't think that the charter organized town meeting process is discriminatory to anyone, it's open to everyone, everyone's invited, everyone should be participating if they can, and we would want to make sure that anyone that wants to be there at the town meeting, at the regularly scheduled town meeting, lets us know so that we can. So I totally disagree that we're discriminating in a, and.
You don't think the structure does it?
No, I'm an early to bed and early to rise person, and most of the people that are here are probably early to bed and early to rise people as well.
But I'm not making it personal, I'm, I'm making this, the format.
I think that crosses age levels, I just don't think it's, that term discriminatory getting thrown around, I think, I think it's kind of offensive.
Well, you shouldn't take it personally, it's structurally that way.
One second, please, I don't think we need the, I don't think we need the debate on the issue, the, the question right now is whether or not it's a consensus of the board to include an article or not. The merits of the argument will come later if it, if there is a consensus of the board to put it on, so I will ask once again. Mr. Frisco, would you like to have it put on? Mrs. Mani Pelli, would you like to have it put on? I, for one, am not at this particular point in time. I'm not opposed to having the moderator, if you ask for a consensus vote as to whether or not town meeting would like to consider it a delayed date, you know, in October or something, but I don't think we need an article right now. Now, we have 30 somewhat articles to go through. I think it would take a lot of discussion.
I would not be in support of it right now, based on the feedback that I've received.
Mrs. Mani Pelli?
I would either.
Okay, so, good for you, bringing it up, good for you with putting forth a thought process for consideration, but it's not a consensus of the majority of the board at this particular time to include it in this warrant. Doesn't preclude us from putting it in October, doesn't preclude someone from offering a citizen's petition, 10 signatures to have it put on at a later town meeting, and again, it's not unprecedented for, and I think the rules allow for a quick consensus vote on an issue with prior notice to the moderator that it's going to be doubted.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't waste my time going that route.
But just for the people who normally attend?
Well, I, you know, the seniors, the seniors, the seniors won't be there, so they're the ones that matter in this question.
Okay, so again, I think maybe the discussion this evening will help generate some discussion out in the public, and maybe the rest of us will hear back from a certain constituency that we haven't heard from yet. But I appreciate your effort in bringing it forward. Any other issues in relation to town meeting warrant articles? Nope?
Too many.
Too many? All right, appointment of primary and secondary records access officer, or officers.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the chapter 121 of the Acts of 2016 and MGLC 66, chapter, in paragraph 6A, I move to appoint the following individuals as records access officers for the town of North Reading, with the terms to run concurrently with their employment in these positions. Primary RAO, RAO, Town Clerk Barbara Stats or her designee. RAO for the school, excuse me, School Department Superintendent John Bernard or his designee. RAO for the Police Department Police Chief Michael Murphy or his designee. RAO for the Fire Department Fire Chief William Warnock or his designee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yule, seconded by Mrs. Mani Pelli. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Review upcoming meeting schedule, there appears to be, you know, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, the 18th of April, which is, Monday's a holiday, and it's also School Vacation Week, and I know that there's a conflict, hopefully our chairman will be back in action, but we can't be assured of that. I know that I have a potential conflict, and another member of the board may also, so it could very likely be that we would not have a quorum for the 18th, so the suggestion is to move our next meeting to the 24th of April, then it just becomes a question as to whether or not we want to meet the following week, or push it out two weeks.
That's correct. The board has the opportunity to sign the warrant as late as Monday, May 8th, and then that would still allow for it to be delivered to residential addresses in town in time for the statutory requirements. We could certainly evaluate the, where we're at on April 24th in terms of how we want to handle it. One advantage to moving it to the 8th is that it gives us additional time for consideration of, well, it basically gives us the opportunity to add a third meeting if necessary on May 1st, but if we don't need it, then we would be meeting on alternate weeks.
So if it's okay and the consensus of the board, our next meeting will be April 24th, and then we'll have a regularly scheduled meeting for May 8th with a potential, depending upon what issues arise, on May 1st, but a regularly scheduled meeting within the 8th, and then.
The Finance Director's reminding me that she's previously committed to travel to the Munis Conference out of state, so she's not going to be here on Monday, the 8th.
On Monday, the 8th?
So it's definitely on the meeting. Reconsider our budget.
We're moving the 17th to the.
To the 24th.
To the 24th, okay.
And then we're already scheduled for May 1st, but.
Oh, yeah.
Already scheduled for May 1st.
Yeah, by policy, it would be May 1st and May 15th, it would be.
The 1st and the 15th, by policy, we can keep that schedule, but we could potentially move it to the 8th and still be able to meet the requirements for signing the warrant, getting it out in mails on a timely basis.
Well, it'd make sense to go to the 8th since we're meeting on the 24th.
Because you don't want Liz to be available.
I believe two years ago you did it without me, so you can handle it.
Well, you did, you did a great job having all the information there, so.
What's, what's the feeling, first of the 8th? First of 15th or 8th and 22nd?
I'm going to May, May 1st.
Mr. Frisco?
There's five Mondays in May, so it would, would make more sense to do an 8th and the 22nd, I think, and then we go back on our regular schedule in June, which would be June 5th, so it'd be a little separation.
The only thing that would be handled in between would be a reorganization of meeting, which is a brief meeting, probably the Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday after the election.
Fourth of May?
What, what, yeah, what day is the election?
The 2nd.
Second, so usually we do it on that Thursday.
Usually, that's right.
Can we just review that schedule one more time?
All right, we're moving the 7th, the 7th, what is it, the 18th?
Our next meeting will be the 24th.
The 24th. We have a scheduled meeting right now for the 1st, but we're talking about moving it to the 8th, so it would be the 1st and the 15th by policy of May, 1st and the 3rd.
That's right, yeah.
Instead, it would be the 8th and the 22nd.
So no meeting on the 1st, one meeting on the end.
That's what we're deciding.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's what we're discussing.
I'm adding it in.
Mr. Frisco was advocating for the 8th.
And the 22nd.
And the 22nd.
All right.
Pointing out that there are five Mondays in, in May. And again, the 8th does not interfere with our ability to sign the warrant on a timely basis and get it mailed out and meet the required time restrictions. So you've got us penciled in?
That, that, that's fine, that schedule works, 8th and 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, thinking about the way this would play out, though, we still need to have the budget hearing for the board's final recommended budget to town meeting, which would, as it, as it would lay out right now, would likely be that same day, May 8th, as I think about it, because we would likely make any final adjustments to the budget at the April 24th meeting, hopefully, and then print, print the budget, have the hearing on the budget. It's just going to, it's going to, whatever day it happens, the 1st or the 8th, it's going to be a lengthy agenda. I think that's just something we need to be prepared for, and it's going to likely include signing the warrant and a budget hearing as well. So I just would make everyone aware of that.
All right. Are we aware?
So beware, beware.
Whether it's the 1st or the 8th, it's still going to be a, the budget will be, have to be ready, and we'll have to have a hearing. It will probably be in better shape on the 8th only because it would give us more time to close the gap, or work on closing the gap.
So are we going to stick to the 8th and 22nd?
Just so long as everybody's aware that we're probably going to have not only sign the warrant, which isn't a big deal, but, you know, a budget hearing.
Well, you may have to get out of work a little early that day, and we start a little earlier.
All right?
Start at 6 that day.
Yeah, I would suggest that, starting earlier.
Okay.
And then the 8th, maybe we can have the Assistant Finance Director sit in for Liz, since that's, if we're going to be doing the budget, we're going to need somebody with some, we're going to need some adult supervision.
No, I, I would agree, we would need to have somebody here from the department. Another alternative we can look at, too, depending upon where we're at on April 24th, is whether we have the budget hearing as a standalone agenda item on May 1st, but we don't need to make that determination now. I think we should go with the 24th, then the 8th, and the 22nd, and we'll evaluate.
And then the 4th, we're going to hold as a reorg meeting?
Yes.
All right, so on the 24th, we'll continue to evaluate as far as whether we want to have a budget meeting on the 1st or something else, all right? So just be aware that the 1st may still be on your, your calendar. Because of the timing of having to have the budget hearing, warrant closed, recommendations. Okay, Town Administrators' report. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number of things to note. First, the town will host its first non-civil service police patrol officer examination on Saturday, May 6th at the high school. Detailed information can be found online at www.policexamsolutions.com/nrpd-exam. That's the website for our third-party testing company that was selected to administer the test, and qualifications information is available on that site as well. Second, as a follow-up to the board's discussion, the Library Director, Public Works Director, Building Superintendent, and I met to review the status of the library elevator. I attached the service history, we believe we have addressed the processor and muffler issues, however, we are in the process of identifying a fire alarm service firm to address the issue of communication between the elevator and the fire alarm system, which is now believed to be causing the current functionality issues, and I want to recognize Captain Nash for his assistance with regard to this on an interim basis and addressing the issues as they've come up. Hopefully, we can address them for the long term. I'm pleased to report that the renovation of Room 10 is nearly complete. Human Resources occupied its new space as of March 29th, and Youth Services was scheduled to occupy on March 30th. There's some movement that will take, need to take place with regard to Youth Services, but the space will be available to them this week. Renovations will begin at the old Human Resources Office space, which will house the Veteran Service Office. I want to thank Julie Spurnite for her efforts to move these projects along as quickly as possible. Fourth, Representative Jones's office has advised me that the town's projected FY 2018 Chapter 90 road construction allocation is $508,338.27. This amount is consistent with our capital planning forecast, which calls for a total appropriation of $800-plus thousand dollars for road improvements, including $300,000 of town funds if recommended by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Fifth, the Youth Services Director provided me an attached report relative to federal funding for the Office of National Drug Control Policy, which funds our Drug-Free Communities grant. Will continue to monitor the federal budget and any potential impact it might have on this grant. Sixth, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council has awarded an efficiency and regionalization grant for an online street opening permit project that includes North Reading. We believe this grant will allow us to more affordably improve service delivery to residents and utility companies by enhancing customer, customer experience and making permitting more accessible. I want to thank the Public Works Director and the Town Engineer for their efforts. A detailed description of the program is attached to my report. Seventh, the kickoff meeting for the Concord Street Sewer Study Project, which is funded by the State Community Compact, was held on March 29th. Selectman Frisco and I, and members of the Public Works Department, as well as our consultant, will be meeting with the MWRA tomorrow to review data. Project is scheduled to be completed by June 30th, and a copy of the meeting agenda from last week was attached to my report. Eighth, Selectmen Maseri and Frisco, and I, along with Public Works Director Andrew Lafferty, Water Superintendent Mark Clark, and Consultant Rob Williams from Wright Pierce, met with representatives of the town of Andover regarding potable water supply on March 30th last week. The representatives, again, asserted that Andover can provide North Reading all of its water needs under advantageous terms. We requested that Andover formalize the terms and conditions of such an arrangement for our review, and we advised them of the many concerns North Reading has. These concerns include the length of an agreement, water supply costs, having a seat at the table during rate setting, the long-term viability of the Merrimack River as a water supply, costs to construct the required infrastructure in Andover, the long-term maximum capacity that could be afforded to North Reading, and a timeline for implementation. We're scheduled to meet with Andover again on April 14th to hear their response, and work on the MWRA project continues on the initially established schedule. Ninth, as of March 30th, Public Works crews were out for 31 events. Friday and Saturday's event will be the 32nd event. I'll just summarize that we were basically at our budget and our allowance for overage at $424,000, and we've now exceeded that based on the storm that took place over the, over the weekend. And that concludes my report, excuse me. I have additional information, I'm sorry. Bear with me. First, or in tenth, I should say, I'll note that the School Department is looking at potentially installing a removable fence in the outfield of the baseball field in the center of town. This would require review and approval by the Historic District Commission. They, the School Department will be requesting that review, or has requested that review, if they haven't requested it, they're in the process of doing so, with a goal of, if approved, trying to install this removable fence later this spring. This is a project of the baseball, as I gather, the baseball program in the School Department.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question on that? A removable fence, portable fence, I mean, it's up during the game and down?
It would be seasonal in nature, as I understand it, so this would be a, an outfield fence. As I understand it, it would be a six-foot outfield fence, the posts for which would be permanent in the field, but the fence itself would be able to be removed, the posts would be able to be removed from the foundation in the field. So effectively, it would be set up for the baseball season and then taken down at the end of the baseball season, as I understand it.
A reason for this?
I have to defer to the School Department with regard to that, but there is some baseball-related reason for it, but I have to defer to the School Department for that. And I'm understanding, is there maybe an effort underway for fundraising in order to pay for this?
Probably through the Diamond Club, but I don't know.
Yes.
So we're going to have a Green Monster, huh?
It's a six-foot fence, not quite a Green Monster, but, and again, I'm just noting that it's something that's underway, it has not been finalized, but there is an extensive planning effort, as I understand it, that's ongoing. And again, we require, because half of the field is located in the Historic District, some review by the-
So it's through fundraising they want to do this?
As I understand it, yes.
I haven't heard about it. Not aware.
Athletic fields should have Athletic Fields Committee and fences.
I attended the Mystic Valley Elder Services Legislative Breakfast last week, which Mary Prenney, our Senior Elder Affairs Director, was one of the speakers on the agenda, and she had with her Millie, I always pronounce her last name wrong, Chitichio, I believe? Did I say that right?
Close enough.
She is, she attended, was a guest speaker, she did a little coffee table discussion with the Executive Director, Dan O'Leary, which I think everyone found very informative on Tuesday of last week. And then finally, with the approval in town meeting of the appropriation for Designer Services for the Arthur Kenny Field, and as a result of the comments made at town meeting, I've been working with Representative Jones to see if we can obtain an indication, an informal commitment, which would ultimately become a formal commitment from the State Plumbing and Gas Fitting Board to reduce the number of fixtures required for the bathroom facilities at that field. And right now, the targeted number would be five fixtures in each of the men's and women's room, and that's something Representative Jones's office is, is in discussions with the State Plumbing Board on. It would require a formal approval. The idea, and as I understand it, would be to potentially reduce the, the cost of the building itself to be constructed there. The second item, which I know has been discussed and will be discussed further at the Athletic Facilities Committee meeting tomorrow night, is the structure of the bid as it goes out. We are looking at an alternative that may be available to us at minimal, or perhaps no additional cost, to seek bids for construction of the bathrooms, as well as construction of the bathrooms with a slab for potential future construction of the concession stand, and then potentially, depending upon the extent of the design, the ability to secure, quote, bids for a complete facility, so that the town would have all of the information in terms of the cost, the complete facility, including a concession stand, when requesting funding at the June town meeting. Something that will be discussed at tomorrow night's Athletic Facilities Committee meeting, and is partially driven by the comments that were made at the, at the March town meeting. And I believe that concludes my report. Thank you.
Mr. Yule?
Yeah, so the, we've gone to the bathrooms. The addition of the slab and the concession stand would, in essence, be within the $50,000 allocation? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, the designer has indicated to me that they would recommend, for purposes of, again, pressuring the market to be as competitive as possible, that, that they believe that within that $50,000, they would be able to provide a, a bid package that would allow us to gauge an actual cost, a bid, to construct a complete facility. Doesn't obligate us to construct it, but it would give us the information and-
And doesn't give you a number either of the total construction either?
Yeah, well-
Yeah, well.
It would, okay.
It would, it would. It would, it would give us the idea.
Okay, okay.
By having the add-altern, two add-ons, slab, slab with a-
Slab with, with, okay. So it's a B three parts?
Exactly, three, that's exactly correct.
And, and they're looking at the bathrooms being down to five per sex?
Yes.
I presume?
It would be, in the men's room, it would be three urinals and two toilets.
Oh, I see, I see, so it's, okay.
Five fixtures in each.
One room, two rooms, okay, got you.
And two sinks.
And, and the, the, what are the numbers now as far as?
Those haven't changed.
But, no, no, the, the numbers, how many urinal count?
Fix count?
Bathroom, what's the?
Thirteen.
So, thirteen total, eight in the women's and five in the men's.
Five in the men's, so.
So we'd be reducing the women's to, to five.
To five.
There was a discussion about potentially reducing the men's to a total of three, but I think the feeling was that on a high occupancy basis, that would be an overtaxed facility at that number.
Mrs. Maney-Pelly?
The reduction requires another variance?
It would, yes, so we'd be bidding at contingent.
Is that part of the cost factor associated with this?
I'm not sure I follow, the, the cost of obtaining the variance, you say?
To go to the, the board to get the variance and-
We manage the variance all in-house, basically using our own staff time last time. There is a cost associated with DEP for connecting to the wastewater facility. That's something that's carried in the estimate that we have at this point from them, which is within the $50,000 approved at, at the March town meeting.
And then who's the designer? And this is supposed to be from soup to nuts, so from design specs to bid, so that we're not spending $50,000, that's what we just did, went through this whole process, but who's the designer that we're using? We're not using the same-
We are.
Yeah, we are.
CBI.
Same designer that we already paid the money to, to give us all those different-
We went through designer selection and identified this firm, we haven't gone through another designer selection to find an additional firm.
Timelines would not necessarily allow us to do that either.
No.
No.
Who is the designer that we're using?
CBI consultants out of Dorchester.
The same one that gave us all those?
But at least we'll have a pretty total picture as to-
The number.
The number, or numbers, number or numbers. Three face for all of us.
With no obligation to any of the, of those. And the benefit of, rather than relying on cost estimate, which is normally how we would procure or, or seek an appropriation for funding, we'll actually have the bid number in hand at the June town meeting.
Good.
So numbers.
Assuming, for argument's sake, that right now, the bid is 652.
Cost estimate.
Cost estimate, okay, I'm sorry, you're correct. So the cost estimate is 652. All right, we've allocated funds, $400,000 plus, what, I think, 250 for the, the, the C I, Capital Improvement Planning Committee, I think there's 250 allocated there, I think.
We've discussed that as an option. I wouldn't say it's allocated there.
I wouldn't say that it's in the mix yet, I wouldn't say that it's necessarily, I prioritize.
It, it, it did pretty well on the rating system, so, so it's almost a safe bet, but, so, so you basically technically have the funds to do the bathrooms, option E, I believe it was option E. Basically have the funds for that.
We would hope so. I, I would say, subject to whatever the final bids are, yes.
Right, right, I mean, assuming it won't be higher than, than the estimated 652, assuming that, just for argument's sake. If the, if you add the slab and the concession stand to this, then obviously it's going to be a much bigger number. Have you given any consideration, if you're even thinking about it, you must have given some consideration, how the heck are we going to do this, you know? So how, how would, how would you cover, assuming it's $750,000?
I would say this, from my conversation with the designer, I look at it a bit differently, which is that for nominal, perhaps no additional cost, but certainly for a cost within the budget we have for this phase of design, we have the opportunity to know what the construction contract would cost for any scenario, for any of those three scenarios that I just described. The concern that, that the designer expressed to me, and that I now have, is, we've had this discussion, we don't, we don't know what the bids actually will be until we open them, and on the potential chance that the cost estimates were just high, because they were done so conservatively, those costs, the actual bids, could be lower than those numbers. At which point, I would kind of feel that we get caught in the same trap we've kind of been in all along, which is, we're going based on cost estimates, but we don't have the actual numbers, versus now, we have the opportunity for the actual number with not a whole lot lost in terms of the effort at this point. The designers, again, this was input to me, where he said, I don't know why you wouldn't bid it out that way, it's not going to be substantially different in terms of the effort. You're already going to the market, it gives us the opportunity to, to know the cost. Whether we should do option two, or option three, or even option one, that's a different discussion, but at least we'll know the actual cost.
I understand it, so, so you're going to get the actual cost in CBI, okay? So you're going to have the actual cost, and I have to assume that with the slab and the concession stand, it's going to cost more than the current estimated price of 652. I would, I'd have to make that assumption, even if I'm wrong, okay? So you now have to think, based what money has been put aside, you now have to answer the question is, okay, if it's more, how are we going to cover the more? How are we going to do that?
I think the premise that the 652 is the number is the thing I'm kind of disagreeing with, because it's a cost.
Well, give me a number.
I will after we open the bids.
I don't think they really knew, that's the whole thing, they didn't really know when they gave us that 652, that that was what it was going to be.
I think once we open the bids, we'll have to decide how much we want to spend, who we want to spend it on, and then how we're going to finance it, we'll get through it.
Why would you spend the time on it now?
You know, whether we, you know, do something outside of the regular capital plan, like we did with the little school roof, or something else.
I'll answer your question while I'm spending time on it now, because I look ahead, I look forward, and I try to anticipate what's in front of me, all right? And I have numbers to work with, whether they're estimates or not.
You don't, we don't have them.
They're estimates or not, they're numbers, put by the same company that's going to put the new numbers. So I'm just trying to anticipate that.
But anyway, just as far as, as far as this is the debate, this is more informative as to what's, what's transpiring. The Athletic Facilities Subcommittee meeting tomorrow night will be making a recommendation to the administration and the board as to, the administrator, what to put out to bid. They, again, the suggestion is, will be, and I'd be surprised if the recommendation is not, to recommend and include the two add options, to see what the whole price will be.
Of course, I'm not saying you shouldn't do that, that's, that's not my-
I think we're good. But then we just wait and see what happens.
I think they're not giving the numbers out, they're just giving the design to be bid and get numbers out.
Right, yeah, they're, they're, they're not going to put any more-
Right.
-cost estimates on there, just putting bid documents together to guess what the marketplace is going to be.
The numbers are-
So there will be no more, there will no, be no more guessing.
So what's the deadline for them to give, to give that information?
There's a timeline, and that is-
So we expect that the bids will be due the second week of May?
So we could have one for the meet, and so we know what to do on the meet.
So, but anyway, just before the board, it would appear as though the bid package will include the two add-ons, is there any opposition to that?
No, no, I agree with Mr. Yule, I mean, you blinked and turned around, and the numbers were creeping up, so, no.
So are we okay with putting the bid out for that?
I think we want to know.
Those specifications? One, two, and three.
That's what we've paid the money for.
One, two, and three, yeah.
Well, you're getting it all for the same price, so, why not? I mean, I don't have a problem with that. If, 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 if the question was that, well, for another $15,000, we can include an estimate on this, I would say no.
No, we're not, that's not the case.
It's not the case.
That's not the case.
He didn't say-
So we're good.
Fifteen, twenty minutes ago, he didn't say that.
All right, terrific. Thank you, anything else?
Yeah.
No.
No? All right, all the new business. Mrs. Maney-Pelly?
No, I'm good, thank you. Oh, just wish him, Mr., just wish him, Mr. Maseri speedy recovery, though.
Yes.
Glad everything went well, and, yes, be able to keep him in there, keep him in their prayers, so he recuperates.
Mr. Yule?
Yeah, I think that's the, the only thing for me to talk about, is that Bob gets better quickly, and that is, as I told him, that it's a successful operation, and that his quality of life gets as close to normal as we in that age bracket can get.
Mr. Prisco?
Just want to, just add a little something to the Town Administrator's Report. I want to thank the Commonwealth for granting us the Community Compact money to allow us to hire Wright Pierce as our consultant to assist us with the Concord Street Sewer Project Study, or Research that we're going through. So that Community Compact continues to pay dividends for us, so, very appreciative of that opportunity. And I want to thank MWRA, they've been very responsive to us, and I'm hoping that our next meeting will have a very good report, and if we have an opportunity, if we're going to extend, now we'll extend the meeting to eight, May eighth, we will put together something, at least a, a white paper from that meeting, since we'll be a few weeks now, so the board has an idea of what comes out of that meeting. And I will take the responsibility to pull that together. Exciting times.
All set?
Set.
Okay, the only thing I have to add in relation to the Athletic Facilities Subcommittee is that, you know, this is a follow-through of what we made a commitment to town meeting to do, just to, quote, get the bids and find out what the real price is going to be, and I want to acknowledge the administrations and Representative Jones's efforts. We made a commitment to go back to the state and take a look at the, have them ask us, ask them to take a look at the facility if they could reduce it. We appear to be getting a favorable response, and again, I want to acknowledge Representative Jones's efforts and that, and the State Board for, they're willing to consider it. Again, just to echo my colleague's comments, just wish Bob a speedy recovery and get back here, as far as I'm concerned, Chairman for life.
What's his recovery time?
On the Bob schedule or the doctor's?
No.
Bob's schedule is, he'll be here, you know, next meeting, but he's hopeful, but, you know, he told him to lay low for four to six weeks, but Bob won't lay low in four to six weeks. Guarantee of that.
Which is-
But, good news, hopefully it continues to be good news for him, and we wish him a speedy recovery. With that, we do have a brief executive session.
Let's keep it brief.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
To executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing Exemption Three Litigation and Collective Bargaining Strategy. Such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact to the town, and to admit the following, there's nobody to be admitted, and further, that the Board of Selectment will return-
Liz, you're staying, right?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rourke, sorry, I didn't realize you were going to be here. I guess you would have left a long time ago if you could. And further, the Board of Selectment will return to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Uh, second.
We have a second, roll call vote, Mr. Prisco.
Aye.
Mrs. Maney-Pelly?
Aye.
Mr. Yule?
Aye.
The chair votes aye.